Alumni Association about the Granting Dreams Program. So at this point, I'd like to please welcome Dr. Gary Mazzola to the microphone, Principal of South High, to introduce the student with the 36 on her ACT exam.
There are certain things you get to do when you're principal, and one of the big perks is every once in a while you get someone as incredible as Megan Scanlon that comes along, and you get the privilege of introducing her to a lot of nice people tonight. I wanted to tell you a little about Megan. As a junior, Megan scored a 36 on her ACT, which is amazing, just amazing. She's ranked number three in her class out of 458 students. Megan, I promised her I wouldn't gush too much, so I'm going to keep this to two to three minutes. She has a 4.628 GPA. At our Honors Award Assembly, she was presented the Yale Book Award, the Rensselaer Polytechnic Award, Science Award. She is representing South High at Girl State, and she's received a Basham Om Honorate Science Award. Megan, in addition to being incredibly intelligent around our tennis team, Megan is a member of our DECA, our marketing team. She's a member of the National Science Honor Society, Beta Chi Pi, and of course, she's a member of our National Honor Society at South High. Megan's also a fierce competitor in the Speech and Debate Program. As a first-year competitor, she finished third or fourth at every one of her Speech and Debate tournaments, and with another new competitor, they qualified for Nationals in public forums. So this June, she'll be leaving St. Louis area and competing for South's Speech and Debate Team in public forum. One of the things that I think impresses me the most about her is she's just a pretty regular person. She has a very warm smile, she's very easy to talk with, and you would never, you can imagine her being as intelligent as she is, but she just doesn't wear it out there for everybody to know. So Megan, I hope I haven't gushed too much. I appreciate that. So University of New Hampshire, where she'll be studying in the Project SMART program, she'll be studying biotechnology and nanotechnology, and again, I want to repeat, as a junior. So without much further comments, Megan, would you please come down and meet the Board of Education? Yeah.
All right, we're going to avoid our usual routine of sitting down between introductions and try to move things along here. Next, we'd like to recognize students from North High who were finalists in the Lexus Eco Challenge. Russ Barton, a science teacher at North High, provided the leadership for these students. Could Mr. Barton please come to the podium and tell us about the Eco Challenge and introduce your students?
Thank you very much. The Lexus Eco Challenge was started as a joint venture between Skolaskar. Their idea was to try to put forth a large sum of money to encourage teams from all over the nation to come up with innovative ideas to try to improve environmental stewardship and environmental awareness around the country. Two of the teams from Parkway North became two of 16 that won initial challenges from all over the country. So Parkway North had one-eighth of all the teams in the nation that were invited to compete in the final challenge. And of those two teams, one of the teams then went on to be recognized further as one of the top five teams in the nation. I'll introduce one of the teams myself, and then I'll have one of the spokesmen for the other team introduce them. One of my other spokesmen didn't show up just right away. In this endeavor, they won $35,000 all total in scholarship and grant money. $7,000 of that went to the school, and they decided that they would like to have it dedicated toward making North a solar school, in hopes that they might be able to encourage some corporate donors to come forth and try to match that money and help Parkway North environmentally more aware community. Team Echos is the first team, and I'll introduce them since Emily's not with us today. Amelia Chin couldn't make it, nor could Kelly Mazzoni. The rest of the team consists of Jacqueline Sotradis, Stephanie Zhang, Seva Tajia Debra Konda, Seva's not here either, Ahmed Syed, and Michael Frye. You guys mind coming down? They put together a website that encouraged people to make their homes more energy efficient, energy friendly, and use things like rain barrels, native plantings, to take steps to make their own personal, stay up here for now, to take steps to make their own personal footprint a less invasive footprint. To introduce Team Neon and explain what they did, I'll ask David Gold to introduce his teammates.
So as Team Neon's project, we put together a website that established a way for teachers to request seed packets of Missouri native seeds, and we sent them out all over the Midwest and to places as far as Florida, and got contacts even from other countries asking about the projects that we were doing. And so with that, we set up a website that included lesson plans and all sorts of other resources for teachers to use to spread the education of Missouri native plants and the establishment of rain gardens throughout the Midwest. So for that, we were one of the top five in the nation, and the team members that could not be here today were Simon Nogan and Ahad Hosseini, and here tonight, oh, Ahad is here over there, and also we have Jenny Koschner, Ben Weinstock, Calvin Irwin, and myself, David Goldbell. So, thank you.
That was outstanding. Next, we are pleased to recognize graduating seniors who have volunteered to serve their country in one of the branches of the U.S. Military. This includes service in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, and Coast Guard, either on active duty or in one of the reserve components. Before asking Assistant Superintendent Kirchhafer to come forward and introduce our honorees, I'd like to offer a few thoughts. As a Navy veteran of 22 years myself, first, let me be one of the first to say thank you. Thank you for what you are choosing to do, and thank you for what you're about to do in service of the United States. From my experience, there are few things more mentally and physically challenging yet personally satisfying than serving your country in the military. Those of you who are ranks, I salute you because you will soon become the backbone of our military. To those of you who will train to become commissioned officers, I thank you for your leadership and remind you to take good care of your subordinates and never hesitate to seek the advice and counsel of your non-commissioned officers, because they are the seasoned professionals and usually have the answers to your questions. To the parents, I say thank you for supporting the decision of your son or daughter, and I know we will continue to support them in the weeks and months ahead, because regardless of how seemingly mature they may get, they always need the love, patience, and understanding that only a parent can provide. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Desi Kirchhafer to come to the microphone and recognize our military graduates. Mr. Kirchhafer?
Thank you, Mr. Jacob, for your service in the Navy as well, and also to you, Mr. Jacobs, for your service in the United States Army, and for all the members of the audience who have served our country. We are grateful for all of your service. Before I call our students forward, I would like to echo Mr. Major's remarks. This is the time of year when we celebrate the accomplishments of our graduates and look forward to the next chapter in their lives. While many students are making plans to go to college or enter the workforce, some, like those here tonight, are getting ready for boot camp or other similar training as they embark on a career in the military. Some will serve for only a few years, but others may serve 20 or even 30 years. I've witnessed many students join the military over the years, and you just never know where that path will lead them. Some of them will find a true calling through the military service, and others will decide to pursue different interests. But I believe each of you will be glad you served and will grow from the experience, and I know that all of us in this room are extremely proud of your history.
We have some 20-plus students who will be joining the ranks of the military, some early this summer, some in the next fall. We've got some of the students that are here with us tonight, and I'd like to ask some of them to join us and be recognized by Superintendent Molito and the Board of Education. First, from Central High, I'd like to call down Corey Hart. Corey? Corey will be, Corey will be serving in the Army Reserves. He's doing his training at Fort Lenwood, and then he will be off to Afghanistan. Thank you, Corey. Next, from Central High, I'd like to bring down Kayla Layman. Kayla? Kayla will be attending the Naval Academy starting July 1st, where she will begin her career in engineering. Thank you, Kayla. Next, also from Central High, Oscar Urbano. Oscar, could you come on down, please? Oscar will also be joining the Army Reserves. He will be off June 7th to Fort Jackson, South Carolina, and his specialty will be in the Logistics 92 Alpha. Now, from North High, I'd like to call down Sean Smith. He's received a $180,000 scholarship to Kansas University this fall. Also from North High, I'd like to bring down James Curtis. James will be active Army. In August, he will report to Fort Benning, Georgia, as airborne infantry. Also from North High, I'd like to bring down Jesse Hayden. Jesse will be beginning his career with Marine Corps active in San Diego Transportation. Thank you, Jesse. Also from North High, Andrew Zhang. Andrew also will be in San Diego in January, and he will also be in the Marines. Thank you very much, Andrew. I believe, are there any other students who snuck in on us that we did not get to greet at the door? All right. One more time, I'd like to give these students round of applause, and I'd also like to ask that they get their photo with the Board of Education here. But thank you again, students, for your service and your dedication to our country. Thank you. A stray bit of advice that my father offered me and I actually found useful at one point during Officer Candidate School, and he was airborne in World War II, and he offered up that at some point in your voluntary training, you may reach a point where somebody's trying to convince you to go home. And he found that generally, if you can put that off till after the next meal, you'll find your way all the way through the training, so. Finally, last, I'd like to invite Wally Flick, Parkway Alumni Association President, to come to the podium. A few weeks ago, Parkway Alumni Association recognized the recipients of the Granting Dreams Program. The Granting Dreams Program, founded by Alumni Association, is designed to turn dreams into realities for Parkway students who are eager to further their learning or explore new opportunities.
Thank you, Board and President Major. First off, I'd like to congratulate the Board for you, in partnership with the administration and faculty, are clearly doing something right. What an exceptional group of young people to follow. I think it was Johnny Carson who warned against following an exceptional group of young people, and it was a tough thing to do. So now, I'd like to report how the Alumni Association is attempting to do its small part in ensuring the continued success of Parkway students, besides accumulating more than 4,300 Facebook fans. To review some of our longstanding events, I'm going to borrow a trick that I learned from the recent Parkway graduation ceremonies. Ladies and gentlemen, so everyone can hear all the names, please hold your applause until the end. Craft Fair in November, two long Granting Dreams allocation nights in February, Dream Grant delivery in schools in March, Albert Awards and Teachers of the Year stipends, plus Parkway Day at Six Flags in April, Granting Dreams Ceremony, all high school graduation rehearsals and ceremonies, plus Hall of Fame selection in May, golf tournament coming up in June 11th at the Landings at Spirit Golf Course, the Alumni Database Updating, and reunion assistance throughout the summer, and finally, to round it all out, the induction dinner for the class of 2010 Alumni Association Hall of Fame in November. Wow, I'm winded just reading that list, and those are just the highlights. With the addition of new board members and some exciting new opportunities, we started several new programs that I'd like to tell you about. In March, we sponsored Parkway's first Career Day at West High. Also in March, thanks to a $10,000 grant, we were able to bring nationally-recognized expert Dr. Scott Poland to speak about suicide prevention with Parkway staff and community as part of the New Healthy Kids. Thanks to a lot of hard work, I'm very happy to announce the John L. Baker Fund is now administered by the Alumni Association through the Granting Dreams Program. Its primary funding source, the Faculty and Friends Big Band Concert will take place June 3rd at the Big Sky Lounge. Perhaps our most exciting milestone in 2010 was the hiring of our first part-time employee, West 98 graduate Leah Kruger McCoy. Next year, the Alumni Association will begin an emphasis on planned giving, including an event to both celebrate Dr. Al Burr's 80th birthday and to help endow his fund, the Al Burr Make a Difference Fund, dedicated to motivating and inspiring young teachers. Last week, we held our annual Granting Dreams Ceremony. Some of the veteran directors will remember, historically, we've held this after a board meeting. Well, with all due respect, we've outgrown the venue. This year, we were very proud to host families, friends, as we awarded $22,500 to fund 22 Dream Grants, 220 Dream Grants. Next year, we will cross the $200,000 mark in total grants paid out. To personalize some of these numbers, a quick story. One elementary-level grant to request gymnastics lesson was partially written upside down while the student stood on her head. The grants have lasting impact as well, as a South Middle 8th grader recently wrote how software purchased with a Dream Grant while he was in 6th grade has focused his desire to become a professional film editor. If our Treasurer Randy Aldrich were giving this update, he'd likely wind up saying that the Alumni Association has contributed almost $40,000 directly to Parkway students and staff by assisting with and hosting 25 events this year. There's a lot of work to do, so until next year, we thank the Parkway School District and all of our endeavors.
We are always honored to have you with us. At this time, we'll take a brief break, and those that don't wish to don't have to stay for the rest of the proceedings, and we will resume the meeting shortly. Thank you. That's wood. All of us. We've got 20 something left. Two minutes. All right, are you ready? Carol, I'm gonna go ahead. Okay.
to the agenda. Dr. Malito?
President Major, we did add one personnel item, Carmen Trao's interim assistant principal for public approval tonight.
And that will be Item 10.02.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Thank you.
5.0, citizen statements. I've got the signup sheet here, and we do have 20 citizen statements this evening, so in light of that volume, I am going to request that everybody limits your remarks to two minutes. We will get to everyone, and with that, I would like to call Rep. to the podium, and if you would, state your name and address when you arrive at the podium.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. I am Sue Allen, State Representative from the 92nd District, which includes part of Town and Country, Manchester, and Baldwin, and does include Parkway South High School. And I have the honor of presenting another outstanding student award, so I'd like to ask Jennifer Scanlon to come down here.
And Representative Allen. Technical matter, but if you could give us your address.
You need my address? Okay, I'm sorry. 702 Willow Spring Hill Court. It's always kind of embarrassing. Four words, Willow Spring Hill Court, and at 63017. Thank you. Okay. I have the honor of presenting a resolution from the Missouri House of Representatives to Ms. Jennifer Scanlon. Jennifer is a resident of Manchester, and she will be receiving the Girl Scouting's Highest Achievement Award during the reflection ceremony, which will be held June 6th at the Two Hill Performing Arts Center at the University of Missouri-St. Louis. In order to qualify for this Girl Scout Gold Award, Jennifer had to earn three interest project patches, a focus book, the Career Exploration Pin, the Senior Girl Scout Leadership Award, and the Senior Girl Scout Challenge, and she's won the admiration of her fellow scouts for the initiative she displayed in the completion of her required Gold Award project, and this involved to play in a baseball league out at the Miracle Field in Chesterfield Valley. Jennifer is the daughter of Cindy Scanlon. She belongs to Troop 4506, and she has demonstrated remarkable competence while serving in the variety of leadership positions in her troop, including patrol leader. During her 10 years in scouting, she has compiled an impressive list of achievements. She has earned the Girl Scout Silver Award, the Leadership Pin, Tenure Pin, and a wide assortment of other badges and patches or skills. Whereas, America looks to a bright and promising future because of the achievements already realized by such outstanding young citizens as Jennifer, now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Missouri House of Representatives, 95th General Assembly, join to Jennifer Scanlon for attaining this glorious milestone in her life, and wishing her a wonderful future full of tremendous success. And this signed by Speaker of the House, Ron Richard.
And at the risk of setting a dangerous precedent, we are going to take a picture at this point, but I hope the rest of the folks with public statements won't be offended if we don't take a picture with them. Could Scott Thaller come to the podium and please state your name and give us your address when you come to the podium?
My name is Scott Thaller. I reside at 1305 Old Farm Drive in St. Louis, Missouri, 63146, way to Parkway North. My daughter also is a sophomore at Parkway North this year, and we bought a house in Old Farm Estates in 1993, so my daughter could be educated in the same system that I was brought up, and I thought it was very successful. I know this subject was talked about two weeks ago with the noise from Fernridge High School with the wood chipping, and now I've been informed about the metal processing that might be going on in there, and my question is, if it's going to be moved from what I call the what-haves to the who-doesn't-have, why are we doing this? It's going to be a noise concern for everybody in Old Farm Estates, and my house is the most direct, and my second floor sits directly across from the Quonset Huts, and at 4:30 in the morning, when I go to work, there are workmen up there grinding, yelling and screaming at each other. All this yelling is stopped, but the noise is still going on. I'm not able to sleep upstairs, so I have to sleep downstairs, and my wife and my daughter sleep upstairs, and my wife doesn't get much sleep because of the noise early in the morning. I just don't think it's fair, I guess, to move it from one place to another, because the people in, I guess, Green Trails didn't like it, people in Old Farm aren't going to like it any better, and it's going to cause a lot of noise. To get back to the wood chipping, I think I was misinformed about that. I talked to the superintendent, I forgot his name now, but he said there was no profit being made by Parkway, but then there was another statement being made that there was going to be $350,000 earned off the wood chipping to bring in new teachers to the district. So if we're not selling these wood chips...
Thank you, Mr. Thaller. That is two minutes. We'll give a reply in writing. Thank you, sir. What I call, appreciate the thoughts. We are on an agenda here, so I will keep the meeting in order, and I would call Robin McKee and Kathy Wallace, is that correct? Is there a joint statement? Thank you. If you would both come to the podium, and I guess we'll need two addresses.
Hi, I'm Robin McKee. I reside at 1 Dogwood Trail East in Pacific, here representing the Parkway Registered Nurses Association.
And I'm Kathy Wallace, and I live at 189 Shady Oak Drive, also representing Parkway Nurses.
Thank you very much for letting us speak this evening, members of the Board, Dr. Malito, Mrs. Clanca. We are here representing the Parkway Registered Nurses Association to Dr. Malito, and celebrate the support you've shown to the nurses as Superintendent of the Parkway School District. We value the contributions that you've made and the professional recognition that you have given us over the years, and we thank you for your support and understanding of what it means to be a school nurse in the 21st century. It's a lot different. And so to recognize these contributions, the PRNA has made a donation in your honor to the Ronald McDonald House, which is currently under construction on the campus of St. John's Mercy Children's Hospital. We present to you tonight a certificate of appreciation, and upon completion, the Ronald McDonald House will also carry these same words of gratitude, and it reads that this certificate is awarded to you, Dr. Robert Malito, in recognition of valuable contributions to the professional advancement of Parkway Registered Nurses, and wish you the most rewarding future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robin and Kathy. You will receive a reply in writing. I call Russell Barton. And if you would, state your name and address.
Russ Barton, 2330 Eagle Pine, St. Charles, Missouri. I am a teacher in the district. The two minutes kind of changes everything up a little bit. The cost analysis that I've seen on the recycling center seemed to have a lot of gray math in them where things are being deducted that don't make much sense to me. The simple truth on it is, the recycling center makes us approximately $70,000 a year off recovered materials, and then you subtract off the fact that we don't have to spend an extra $30,000 throwing away the materials that we're recycling, so we're making money, not paying money to get rid of it. It's four tons of material that have gone through recycling and paid the district back. It includes two jobs that I've heard argued wouldn't be lost, but even if they're folded into some other group through attrition, that's two more jobs that Parkway is not hiring for, which seems to me to be a disservice to the community and an economy like we have today. A more important point to this is that if we're going to start using gray math and approaching this Parkway recycling center, maybe we need to look at the fact that that catalyzed a position of energy conservation management inside of the district that saved us $15 million over the last 20 years. And then when you look at some of the scholarships that my kids have gotten, you've seen $35,000 worth of money that they've won this year, and overall, in the time that I've been at Parkway, which is, this is my 60th year, I think, and it's been $65,000 my kids have won directly through their environmental competitions, and a lot of the inspiration from that comes from the students that have gone before and created the kind of legacy that exists within Parkway. The truth is, the environment as much as stewards of our children, because it's not only the Parkway residents that are alive today, but it's those that are going to have to inherit the earth from us that matter just as much. And when we start arguing about whether or not it's too loud at a particular location, I think we do need to address those concerns. However, I think we also need to consider, do we really want our kids mining our trash heaps to get the resources they need, or do we want to be the appropriate type of steward of the environment now, taking care of the environment now to take care of our kids?
Thank you, Mr. Barton. That is two minutes, and you will receive a reply in writing. Call on Matt Siegel. And if you would, state your name and address.
Matt Siegel, 14321 Strawberry Court, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017, City Council Member, Chesterfield. Prior to Friday, I was going to get up here and give you a nice, long speech, or three-minute speech, on some of the principles that we talked about two weeks ago. However, things have changed. I've appreciated working with the Board, specifically President Major and the staff, Dr. Malito. I even like to recognize Russ Barton, who met me on his own time to talk about some of his concerns about the recycling center, or MRF, going forward, and I commend him for his passion and the things he's doing with his students. It's phenomenal. We could use more teachers like that in the Parkway school system. For those that aren't aware, I just want to restate the city of Chesterfield stance. We asked back in February Parkway to look into relocating the MRF to a responsible location or to outsource effective date of June 1st, 2010, and no way did the city of Chesterfield ever tell Parkway to stop recycling. In fact, we leave the metro area in recycling, and we encourage Parkway to do the same thing, just in a responsible manner. Since then, the city of Chesterfield, 8-0 unanimous vote to put this letter together, stating the fact, and several other legislatures has joined us in the cause. Last Friday, the state legislation passed HB 1692, supported by our state senator and representative, which reinforces the city's position and states, as of August 28th, 2010, this operation needs to be moved or outsourced or be relocated within 500 feet. There'll be no impact on the students if you choose to outsource this. I recognize Mr. Barton's concerns, could we do education of Eric leaders or his group going...
Thank you, Councilman, but that is two minutes. And you will receive a reply in writing. Could I call Todd Camps? And if you would state your name and address.
Russ Barton, 2330 Eagle Pine, St. Charles, Missouri. I am a teacher in the district. The two minutes kind of changes everything up a little bit. The cost analysis that I've seen on the recycling center seemed to have a lot of gray math in them where things are being deducted that don't make much sense to me. The simple truth on it is the recycling center makes us approximately $70,000 a year off recovered materials. And then you subtract off the fact that we don't have to spend an extra $30,000 throwing away the materials that we're recycling. So we're making money, not paying money to get rid of it. It's four tons of material that have gone through recycling and paid the district back. It includes two jobs that I've heard argued wouldn't be lost. But even if they're folded into someone, some other group through attrition, that's two more jobs that Parkway is not hiring for, which seems to me to be a disservice to the community and an economy like we have today. A more important point to this is that if we're going to start using gray math and approaching this Parkway Recycling Center, maybe we need to look at the fact that that catalyzed a position of energy conservation, conservation management inside of the district that saved us $15 million over the last 20 years. And then when you look at some of the scholarships that my kids have gotten, you've seen $35,000 worth of money that they've won this year. And overall, in the time that I've been at Parkway, which is, this is my 60 year, I think, and it's been $65,000 my kids have won directly through their environmental competitions. And a lot of the inspiration from that comes from the students that have gone before and created the kind of legacy that exists within Parkway. The truth is, the environment as much as stewards of our children, because it's not only the Parkway residents that are alive today, but it's those that are going to have to inherit the earth from us that matter just as much. And when we start arguing about whether or not it's too loud at a particular location, I think we do need to address those concerns. However, I think we also need to consider, do we really want our kids mining our trash heaps to get the resources they need? Or do we want to be the appropriate type of steward of the environment now, taking care of the environment now to take care of our kids?
Thank you, Mr. Barton. That is two minutes. And you will receive a reply in writing. Call on Matt Siegel. And if you would state your name and address.
Matt Siegel, 14321 Strawberry Court, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. City Council Member, Chesterfield. Prior to Friday, I was going to get up here and give you a nice, long speech or three-minute speech on some of the principles that we talked about two weeks ago. However, things have changed. I've appreciated working with the board, specifically President Major and the staff, Dr. Malito. I even like to recognize Russ Barton, who met me on his own time to talk about some of his concerns about the recycling center, or MRF, going forward. And I commend him for his passion and the things he's doing with his students. It's phenomenal. We could use more teachers like that in the Parkway School System. For those that aren't aware, I just want to restate the city of Chesterfield stance. We asked back in February Parkway to look into relocating the MRF to responsible location or to outsource effective date of June 1, 2010. And no way did the city of Chesterfield ever tell Parkway to stop recycling. In fact, we leave the metro area in recycling, and we encourage Parkway to do the same thing, just in a responsible manner. Since then, the city of Chesterfield, 8-0 unanimous vote to put this letter together, stating the fact, and several other legislatures has joined us in the cause. Last Friday, the state legislation passed HB 1692, supported by our state senator and representative, which reinforces the city's position and states as of August 28, 2010, this operation needs to be moved or outsourced or be relocated within 500 feet. There'll be no impact on the students if you choose to outsource this. I recognize Mr. Barton's concerns, because of the education of Eric Leters or his group going-
Thank you, Councilman. But that is two minutes. And you will receive a reply in writing. Could I call Todd Camps?
Well, I'm going to be a break.
If you would state your-
Todd Camps, 534 Staple Stone, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. I'm going to have to talk a little faster tonight, I guess. I was involved in the first year of Project Parkway, and I wanted first to commend the board and the administration for burying their souls, which is what this really requires, to 300 people looking in every nook and cranny of the school district to try to find ways to improve it. I think it'll probably be one of the most important things the district's done. The reason for some of my comments relate to picking Dr. Malito's interim successor and final successor, based on some of the positive experiences I've had in doing this. I've worked with committee, secondary curriculum coordinator, the president of NEA, several principals and assistant principals. And I've watched all of them work diligently together in a common interest to improve things. Without going into a lot of details, I had the privilege of conducting focus groups with four of the five superintendents, leadership advisory councils. You would be very proud of some of the comments that came from those students. They're the stakeholders. I was honored to be able to do that with one Dr. Desi Kirchhafer, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. I mention that because I've worked with several people in various areas in the administration. And all I can say is I was amazed, surprised at the quality of people you have in the district. With this work, working in a past life as a salesperson, and they went to look for a new sales manager. There was one person in the company that was a bird in the hand, and instead they went outside and chose a bird in the bush. The bird in the bush did okay, wasn't bad, but the bird in the hand-
I'm loath to cut you off, Mr. Camp, but that is two minutes. Thank you, sir. And you will receive a reply in writing.
Please consider the people in the district for some of those positions. That's my point.
Thank you, sir. Could I call Scott Clayman? And if you would state your address.
Sure. Scott Clayman, 14083 Augusta, 63017. Human decency in our community is the shared notion that we treat each other in an ethical, moral way, perhaps the way we wish to be treated ourselves. The basic ethical precepts to human decency include do no harm and be truthful. We expect this from each other. Perhaps no other place is more obligated to do no harm and be truthful than where we send our kids, school. Our teachers have maintained the standard of decency. However, this administration is failing its obligation to human decency, its obligation to parents and taxpayers. The willingness to do harm and the willingness to lie are characterized in an increasing number of administrative policies and practices. Look at the MRF. To willfully put a heavy scrap and toxic materials waste facility on a school campus 70 feet from homes in a residentially zoned area, openly draining into the Creeve Court watershed, is a harm to endanger and an endangerment to health, safety, and environmental quality for all of this community. And to not, well, and furthermore, and for Parkway's response to include, quote, "People will need to sacrifice, get over it," unquote, this is not human decency. It is never necessary nor acceptable to harm some to educate others. And to have a CFO sit quietly as this administration and some board members fall into the MRF's losses and to attack private citizens, that is not human decency. That is not truth. Parkway can and must rise out of this moral abyss and restore the truth and trust which has roded. Restoring the trust means closing this MRF. Don't move it anywhere near no one's home, not on a campus it doesn't belong. Replace the CFO, replace the Director of Communications, and bring in a superintendent who understands the importance of building a morally centered administration and administration and board guided by the simple but powerful precepts, do no harm, be truthful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clayman. And you will receive a reply in writing. Call Bill Gerlowski?
I would like to spell it for you, but I think for the previous state-
Thank you, sir. Call Harvey Rosenberg.
Name is Harvey Rosenberg, 217 South Green Trails Drive, 63017. Been a resident of Green Trails for over 37 years. I am a special assistant to Mayor Nations, and he has asked me to read a letter. I'm going to try to finish it in two minutes, but I can't guarantee it. I'll read quickly, and then I have a 15-second comment. Ladies and gentlemen, I have to put my glasses on, don't count. A previous commitment has kept me from attending your meeting this evening in person, and I appreciate your deference in allowing me to communicate to you by letter on the important subject of the materials recovery facility located on Parkway Central Campus. And first, I extend my appreciation for your thoughtful consideration of my letter to you of February 23, as we attempt to address the concerns of our common constituents. In that letter, I communicated to you our request that the MRF cease operations by June 1, because of its effects on the neighbors and the adjacent subdivision, and our conclusion that its continued operation is not compatible with a high quality of life for that neighborhood. I would also like to take this opportunity to commend the Parkway School District for encouraging recycling at each of its facilities. As a result, recycling is part of each school's culture, and the children attending Parkway Schools learn at a very early age the importance of recycling and the many benefits it affords. It is very important to note that when your recycling programs were initiated, the only option available to Parkway was to collect and recycle your own employees and equipment, and, as I understand, at considerable expense to the district.
Mr. Rosenberg, you've got 15 seconds left.
Okay, it's, I'm going to get, I'm going to start complimenting you. Your willingness to investigate-
(laughing)
15 seconds. Your willingness to investigate alternatives to handling recyclables should lead to significant savings for Parkway. Those cost savings should become apparent not only regarding recycling, but for your entire solid waste collection contract. Utilizing a solid-
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And I apologize, but we are trying to move on-
You don't want to hear the compliment, do you?
We appreciate that. And if you'd like to give us your remarks in writing, we will-
Can I leave the letter from the mayor with you?
Please. And you will receive a reply in writing, as the mayor will.
Now, I think that was the mayor's, can I write 15 seconds?
Oh, please.
Thank you. I just want to say 15 seconds because I listen to everybody, and I think reasonable men and women can agree to disagree. Two things, 15 seconds is the application of common sense, number one, and good neighbors. Good neighbors and common sense. Apply those two things to any problems that we have, and you'll find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Could I call Alan Shepard? And if you would state your address.
Alan Shepard, 826 Judson Manor Drive. It's just down the hill, 63141. Teachers do a lot to maximize their pay and retirement benefits. That includes getting people on the school board who will work toward that end. Some of that may be marginally okay, but in this case, I strongly disagree. The reason many of us are here is to stop the Parkway School System from using our DPs and to keep recycling taking place on Parkway campuses. We want to learn who has the power to endanger our children's lives so that teachers and administrators make more money. If this school board is responsible and their votes are a public record, we will organize and find replacements who are only interested in our students' health, safety, and education. If others are given that responsibility, the school board must see to it that they gain control. Until lobbyists for teachers are paid by those who benefit directly, parents need to react to that. I recommend our state legislators for looking out for the health and safety of us all with Missouri House Bill 16. And all neighbors. I made it within two minutes.
With time to spare. Thank you, sir. And you will receive a reply in writing, Mr. Shepard.
My name is Frank Agavino. I live at 14611 Lake Trails Court in Green Trails, which is a subdivision immediately to your west. And I come here as the chairman and the trustees of the park land in Green Trails. We represent over 600 homeowners in all five subdivisions in Green Trails. And in addition to that, we oversee 140 acres of parkland. The recovery, or the material recovery facility here at Parkway has become an increasing problem. We've had many homeowners come to our meetings complaining about it and asking to consider it. And we are actually glad that you've decided to move this facility because it takes away from us the burden to have to further consider this. It's recently come to our attention from satellite photographs that this facility encroaches on the common land. In addition to that, you can go out and visit the common land that surrounds the school here that we oversee, and you'll notice that that common land has hardly any trees on it because all those trees were removed without our permission in order to create mulch. We've noticed that the facility creates not only sound pollution, but it has health and safety issues. In our view, and the view of all the homeowners that have come to our meetings, it has significantly overall negative environmental impact. Certainly, it has a positive impact, but overall, it has a significantly negative impact, and that doesn't, that is not outweighed by any educational value. It seems like the only, the only solution here to the problem is to outsource, and that is a win-win. The school, but also to increase the effectiveness of the recycling. It will also, we have zoning issues that we have to deal with here that if this facility isn't moved, we don't want to take up that as well. So I thank you for your time, and I'd like to leave with you, got my two minutes.
Your timer's quicker than mine. Thank you, sir. And you will receive a reply in writing. And if I could call Barry Flaxbart?
Thank you. Barry Flaxbart, 347 Ridge Meadow Drive, Chesterfield, 63017. I'm a member of the city council of Chesterfield. However, I have not reviewed my remarks with other council members or with the city staff, so I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen. Each of our four children went through Parkway Schools, found their Parkway education valuable in college, and each has earned at least one degree. I can say that I'm proud of Parkway educational accomplishments. However, not every decision made by Parkway, or by any other organization most likely, is perfect. I believe that some imperfect decisions were made relative to the recycling center, MRF, if you will, at Parkway Central. However, I believe a consensus has emerged that the facility should be shut down and the function outsourced. I applaud this consensus, and I see it as a win for the neighbors who live nearby, and a win for the school district, who will be able to continue to encourage recycling efforts. In fact, I believe it will be a win financially as well, in that I don't believe the full costs of the center were accurately presented in the past. In short, moving on to an outsourced facility makes good sense. Parkway administrators can spend more time on ensuring continuation of excellent education. Thank you very much.
You will receive a reply in writing. Could I call Kevin Friedman?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Kevin Friedman. I'm a resident of the Woodlands, as well as a member of two of the three governing boards in the condominium complex, 1233K Woodland Point Drive, 63146. And I'll leave a copy of my full speech, which I didn't pair down with you when I go, that has my address on it. What does it say when those who should be your biggest supporters aren't? Amongst those who are opposed to the materials recovery facility are current and former Parkway parents and teachers, Parkway alumni, and Parkway residents. Many of us chose to live where we do in part because of Parkway. We want to be your supporters, and we want to work with you, but you're making this impossible for us. Of the 80 residents in the Woodlands that the Woodland Board has spoken to over the past- And the opposition opposing the MRF on school property, and certainly opposing any part of it being relocated to Fern Ridge. I believe in recycling. I want to see as much material as reasonably possible kept out of the landfill. This can be done by outsourcing. If Parkway's recycling is outsourced, the students are still able to have the educational value of recycling the same materials they are today. That's from your own study that was presented at the last board meeting. There would be little, if any, change at the school level. This addresses the concerns of Russ Barton and many others, that we do want to keep recycling, and it would keep instilling the recycling habits within the students and additionally modeling good leadership. From an environmental standpoint, outsourcing increases opportunities for using the latest advanced technology in environmental stewardship. Third, by partnering with a vendor, as the city of Chesterfield has done, the entire operation could be revenue neutral, saving the district thousands of dollars per year, plus the short-term gain from the sale has been and will continue to be lost due to the facility driving down housing prices. And lastly, it addresses the concerns of the community. Again, from your own presentation last week-
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. That is two minutes, so I appreciate that. If you'd like to leave your remarks.
Okay, I, a minute forty-one, but thank you.
Thank you, and you will receive a reply in writing. If I could call David Goldfeld?
I'm David Goldfeld. I live at 287 Ridge Trail Drive, 63017, across Olive over there. And I would like to speak regarding the Parkway recycling facility, because it is certainly something that has inspired students, it's something that was created by students, and it's something that will continue to produce Parkway's excellence in being green and being environmentally friendly. And I find it kind of sad in some areas that some people-
(inaudible)
...cost us money. And if we do get rid of it and decide to outsource, it will cost us money. And so I would like to see those people decide to pay the money for that and hire the two workers, because jobs and money are very hard to come by, especially in this sort of economy. And I find it very disrespectful to the board and the people that we respect, because I know that while there are some unhappy citizens, you have the full support of the student body, not just me, but the entire Envirathon team, the Lexus Eco Challenge, which has won $35,000 this year, and including a Facebook group, which has accrued over 170 members over the past five days. So I believe I also have some other friends who would like to make a statement.
Esteemed ladies and gentlemen of the board, I simply have to say I'm a product, I graduated last week, or this week, I should say. I'm a product of your hard work, and our entire team is a product of your hard work. And I urge you to continue to do this hard work and save this recycling center. That's all.
I just wanted to say that one of the things that I admire most about Parkway is the fact that recycling, the recycling center exists, is something really important. And it's important specifically to me. And the fact that it might be shut down is really disappointing. And the fact that people want to shut it down, people who are environmentally conscious, it's something that's really important to the students, and that should be what's the primary focus.
And with that comes other issues with certain arguments that you hear, such as the environmental unfriendliness with pollution and things like that. It's not the recycling center that's causing pollution, it's irresponsible homeowners in the area that are pouring true green hemp lawn onto their lawns and dirt grasses.
Thank you, Mr. Goldfeld. That's your two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Thank you, and you will receive a reply in writing. If I could call Robert Friedman?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is, I reside at 1241 Woodland Point Drive. I was simply going to hand you my remarks without any comment, saying I concurred with the earlier statements until the comments made by the students. They misunderstood the fact that many of the people are complaining not because of the recycling, but because- the recycling, but because of the problems associated with it. The recycling facility that's been put in place there started out with a very noble idea of basically reprocessing styrofoam and aluminum cans. It morphed into a much larger, unguided project when it was so successful. And as such, it has become an environmental nightmare in many cases. The materials that you are now processing span such a wide range of very noxious, toxic, and... Which basically represent a real health risk to people living in the environment. The place for a facility like this is in an industrially zoned area, which would be what would be done if it was outsourced or if it was moved into the appropriate location. It does not, you know, belong in a residential community. I have worked over 30 to 40 years as a research and development chemist. I've worked on toxic problems, I've worked on waste remediation, I've worked on a wide variety of issues. The problems, once they get in the ground, your groundwater, your soil, your air, you have a problem which lasts, and you have a major problem. It does not belong in this area. And with that, I'll simply give you the rest of my written remarks because I really wanted, I was not going to make anything except for the students.
Thank you, Dr. Friedman. If you give him a Mrs. Colanda at the end of the table. Call Marilyn and Cliff Pollak? Defer, is that right? Thank you. Marilyn Rosen?
Pardon me. My name is Marilyn Rosen, 14036 Augusta Drive, Chesterfield, 63017. I have two questions that I would really appreciate being answered. My first one is, why was the waste facility ever put on school grounds when it should have been outsourced? It should do with the end products that contain lead, mercury, PCBS, asbestos, and other toxins. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosen. You will receive a reply in writing. Dr. Mary Malast?
My name is Dr. Mary Malast. I am a scientist, a material scientist. My address is 22 Glen Cove Drive in Chesterfield. I'll be very brief. I just want to mention that when children are growing, when children have low body weight, they are extremely sensitive and most susceptible to environmental hazards. Recycling is important for the community, it's important for the environment. From the hazards of the toxic materials at the MRF facility. No one wants to shut down the recycling effort or the MRF. We simply ask that it be moved off of the school grounds to protect the children at the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Malast, and you will receive a reply in writing. Call Ellen Daniels?
Good evening. I'm Ellen Daniels, 14017 Augusta Drive in Chesterfield, Missouri. I have lived with the whole issue of moving the recycling. We've had Dr. Malito and Paul Tandy in our backyards to look at the little city. Not at all wanting you all to end your recycling. I think it's very important. My son goes to school, and my older son did also. I'm here tonight to say that if you are thinking of possibly moving the recycling center, that you all would also take a look at your buses. I live directly behind 158 or 148 buses. We've talked about this before, you've increased your parking lot size. When that was done, most of the repaving of that parking lot, a lot of it was dumped in our creek. The runoff from your parking lot, if you go back and look at the trees that have fallen over because the runoff has just washed away the soil. So when we moved here 20 years ago, we never saw buses. We didn't have an issue. Over time, trees have fallen, have died, the foliage is gone. There's 148 buses that start up every morning with all that exhaust in our backyard. You have so many schools, I don't know how, maybe half of your schools are south of Highway 40. I know Paul Tandy at Lunds the fact... Your transportation area farther south or out of a residential area. But this is the biggest concern to me as recycling center is to have 148 buses in my backyard. On a cold winter morning, I used to get up every morning and run, and I would have to cross Lydew Road and run up there to get away from the smell of exhaust. This also is an environmental issue. I think you need to look at other school districts in the St. Louis area and see how many have their own fleet of buses in a residential area. This is an also, this will be another concern that I feel that a lot of us are looking at also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Daniels. You will receive a reply in writing. Call David Carney?
Good evening. David Carney, 13303 Tree Top View Court, Town and Country, 63141. I'm the former mayor of Town and Country. I'm a graduate of Parkway High School, as well as my children, and Al Burrow was my principal, and he was incredible. I'm here tonight to ask you to please don't consider Town and Country, don't consider MoDOT's property off of 141. The city of Town and Country doesn't want it. Please be wise, outsource it, close it down on this grounds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And you will receive a reply in writing. And number 20, for those keeping score, call Mohammed Ali.
Mohammed Ali, 1211 Royal Wood Court. And three months ago, I have to move to a new house, and I have to keep my kids in Parkway North. And I was... And it happened that after I moved in, I found out this neighborhood is a little bit close to the Highway 270. So with such noises overnight, I couldn't sleep well too. And there was, I did ask my neighbors for this problem, and there was many, many suggestions from soundproof, window, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But no one did ask me to call MoDOT to move the Highway 270 away from the neighborhood, especially if this program is inspiring our kids for a better future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and you will receive a reply in writing. And at this time, we will take a brief break, and those that wish to are welcome to depart, and we'll reconvene in...
As I heard on a military base somewhere in my career, "Suits."
Also the thinking position.
You don't want that.
She went out there to talk to Fred.
There, she's coming. Back in session. Six point oh. My life? Six point oh, call for a closed session, May nineteen, two thousand and ten. Can I ask for a motion and a second that the Board of Education called for a closed meeting? Order, please. Ask for a motion and a second that the Board of Education can two thousand and ten, immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, legal action, causes of action or litigation involving the district and any confidential or privileged communications between the district or its representatives and its attorneys. Six, ten, point zero two one, point one.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Seven point oh, approval for a, approval of agenda for May nineteen, two thousand and ten. May I ask for a motion and a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, oh. Resolutions, Memorial Day, May thirty first, two thousand and ten. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, oh. Zero one, calendar of meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, June sixteen, two thousand and ten, at Central Middle School, starting at seven thirty P. M. There will be a special meeting held on Friday and Saturday, June fourth and, June fourth at twelve thirty P. M. And June fifth at nine A. M. At the Administration Building. Nine point zero two, liaison reports. Anyone?
President Major, uh, I'll let some of the others report on some of the other places where I was. I just wanted to report on the wonderful, uh, meeting we had with the Parkway nurses. We met with, uh, Robin McKee and, uh, the current president of the Nurses Association. Uh, Kathy Wallace was there too, the, uh, prior president. Vito Maniaci was there, Lisa Harnaker. And, uh, we have about thirty nurses, uh, all of them have bachelor degrees now, except maybe one. I think maybe all of them do and they take education seriously. They're our first responders, uh, to many of the situations that happen in our schools. I compliment them too. Uh, when we had the H one N one, uh, this was, uh, something that they helped administer and it just went off without a hitch and it's not like we got, uh, ten thousand, um, vaccinations all at once. We got them piecemeal, but they, uh, responded to that challenge and many others. One of the things that fell into their laps was the screening. You would think that, uh, vision screening would be, uh, something that's, that's done, but, but that fell into their laps as something to do. They took it on and, uh, in many cases, they've helped students that the parents didn't know their children had particular, uh, disabilities with their eyes. So in every instance, they, uh, they do what we tell them to do and do so much more. And I just wanted to compliment them. I appreciated the opportunity to meet with them and hear from them, the good things that they're doing and, uh, the support that they need from us. It was a good meeting. Appreciate it being there.
Thank you. Mrs. Mogulman?
Um, well, I think we all had the privilege of attending various graduations last week. It certainly is the highlight of, uh, of my board service every year. It's just so gratifying and, um, I think we all feel that way. Um, so congratulations to our newest graduates of Parkway School District. Um, I would also like to reinforce, um, on June third, the John Baker Concert at the Big Sky Music Lounge, uh, on Curz Mill Road in Baldwin. Um, I think I've gone the last three years and two of the Mogulman children have been recipients of a scholarship from the John Baker, a scholarship fund. It's a wonderful concert. Um, it's, uh, former, uh, it's current music teachers, former music students, all put together a big band and then at the end they let current music students sit in and play with them. It's really a lot of fun, so I would encourage everyone to come out if you're available on the evening of June third. Um, also just to mention, I know tonight's a big night for Project and the majority of you who are still here this evening and it's been a wonderful, um, uh, thing for our district as we heard from a citizen statement tonight. Um, and I applaud every one of you for all of your hard work on it and I, I, I'm just so excited, um, for the vision to move this district forward and, um, I, I'd just like to thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Applebaum?
Um, I attended an open house for, at Piermont Elementary for the Mosaics Academy. Got to meet some of the great teachers and, uh, the, uh, the extra gifted students and the, the parents that, uh, are so interested in, in, uh, making sure that, uh, that the kids get the best of the education that Parkway can provide them.
Thank you. Mrs. Castile?
Um, yes, um, following, uh, Dee's remarks on the graduations, they are, are the most interesting, um, uh, programs that we can attend and have the privilege of recognizing also a lot of our talented students. Um, on May sixth, Mr. Jacob, Dr. Malito and I attended North High's honors program and I think I've got the numbers correctly. If not, I'm sure somebody will correct me, but I believe that there were like, uh, the students, uh, received close to twelve million dollars in scholarships. Um, and, and that is, that is just quite an achievement. Um, on, um, May seventh, Mr. Major and I attended a surprise thank you for one of our SROs at Carmen Trails, Officer Osterman. Um, over three hundred students kept a secret, uh, and, and didn't let him know and he was told that he was giving a safety speech and when he got up there, his face really turned red because it was a turnaround and he was truly surprised, uh, that he was being honored. Um, on May twelfth, Mr. Jacob, Dr. Malito and I attended Wes's honors program, um, and I believe it was uh, who received, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in scholarship. Is that correct? Was that North? Okay. Um, there's still some, I know Wes, uh, had many, uh, students that received quite a bit of scholarship money also. And on May fifteenth, Mr. Jacob and I had the honor of attending Wes's graduation and, uh, there's just, Parkway just has so many talented, gifted and caring students and, uh, it's just, again, absolutely astounding to hear how they give their time and energy to help others in the community. They have initiated a lot of programs, they follow through on the programs. Uh, Parkway is, is just, um, I'm going to say blessed with the students and of course those teachers also who give of their time, such as Mr. Barton. Thank you.
Thank you and I'll, certain objective of graduations, uh, in my view, that is the paycheck for being on the school board and, uh, certainly at, uh, at Central and South's graduations. And I think the, uh, scholarship totals that, from those two were somewhere north of twenty four million dollars, so, uh, pretty impressive on all fronts. Uh, also, last Friday, I, uh, had the distinct privilege to, uh, attend the Oasis Luncheon. Uh, the main part of the privi, well, not the main part, but a, a golden part of the privilege is the, uh, the food that's served. It's probably the best feed in the district in case y'all didn't know. Uh, but certainly our, uh, our Oasis volunteers really are a, a force multiplier throughout the district and we all know how valuable they are and, uh, it does all start with reading, so that's, uh, that's where they help us. And then finally, I'd, uh, second the thoughts on, uh, the SRO, uh, Officer Osterman, who where my daughter Madison attends and, uh, what a wonderful young man and, and very comforting to have him in our schools. Any other? Okay. Ten point zero, action items. Mr. Jacob?
Ten point oh one, approval of minutes. Sorry. Approval of, uh, minutes, special, May third and tenth and regular, May fifth, two thousand and ten. Ten point oh two, approval of personnel matters. Ten point oh three, approval of checks and wire transfers for the weeks of May seventh and fourteenth, two thousand and ten. Ten point oh four, approval of financial report, none. Ten point oh five, approval of bids, quotations and agreements. A, public address parts and services contract, purchase of middle school, B, purchase of middle school memory books, C, purchase of tree and stump removal, D, purchase of purchase of tubas. Ten point oh seven, approval of professional services. A, appoint link, B, interchange technologies. Ten point oh eight, approval of G C C A E dot B P, bereavement leave. Ten point oh nine, approval of G C C A F dot B P, leave for child rearing. Ten point ten, approval of G C C A G dot B P, adoption leave. Ten point eleven, approval of G C C A H dot B P and G, leave for foster care placement. Ten point twelve, approval of G C C A J dot B P and G, sabbatical leave. Ten point thirteen, approval of G C C A K dot B P and G, short term professional leave. Ten point fourteen, approval of G C C A L dot B P, leave for other reasons. Approval of G C C B dot B P, professional leave administrative staff. Ten point one six, approval of G C C B B dot B P and G, sick leave. Ten point one seven, approval of G C C B P dot B P, jury slash witness leave administrative. Ten point one nine, approval of G C C B F dot B P, leave for child rearing. Ten point twenty, approval of G C C B J dot B P and G, sabbatical leave. Ten point two one, approval of G C C B K dot B P, leave for other reasons. Ten point two two, approval of G C Q E A dot B P and G, early retirement teachers. Ten point two three, approval of G C Q E B dot B P and G, early retirement. Ten point two four, approval of G C B F dot B P, dependent insurance married Parkway employees. Ten point two five, approval of renewal of Gale database subscriptions. Ten point two six, approval of renewal of Culturegram's online subscription. Ten point two seven, approval of network services for Novell, comma, Inc. Ten point two eight, approval of network services for Moore Net K dash twelve. Ten point two nine, approval of SyncSort file backup and recovery maintenance. Ten point three oh, approval of Turnitin annual software maintenance, Mr. Steve Van Matter, Director of Technology. Ten point three one, approval of B E D dot B P, closed meetings, records and votes.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent item agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is it pulled to action or closed?
I'd like to pull ten point oh seven, uh, for discretion.
A or B? Or both?
Both.
Ten point seven, A and B. Mrs. Castile?
Um, I would like to pull ten point one four and ten point two one.
Ten point one four and ten point two one.
Right.
Anything else? Okay, for the remaining items. Can I, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Major?
Miss Goldman?
I have to abstain from number ten, point zero two, line eleven.
Line eleven, item ten point zero two, five zero one. The remaining items carry six, zero. Eleven point oh, action items, if we could have, uh, Mr. Van Meter come to the podium and address ten point zero seven, A and B.
Yes, sir.
Steve, I know you sent me an email later earlier and Carol passed it out to the rest of the, uh, the board, but I was really curious if you could tell me a little bit more about how much we spent with these, uh, two, uh, initiatives last year and, uh, just kind of bring us up to date on that. It just would help to understand more what this money's going for.
The special services for interchange technologies has been in place for about fifteen years. It's changed over time as, for example, we used to pay them to do our computer images. Now we in-source that work because we had the knowledge and skill level to do that. So it's a, basically a blanket for convergence. When we went to the, the BlackBerry devices, the enterprise server, we needed to have that set up and allow it to communicate with group wise. We don't have that knowledge and experience in the district, so we lean on a vendor that provides that service to other districts and other organizations. Uh, when we established the Munis server in communications with the vendor, uh, we had that consultant provide the setup for that server and the parameters to make sure it functions both from a security and operational perspective. So there have been a partner of ours for a number of years. Their hours leave out ninety dollars and the going rate is anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars for other vendors. They are on call as needed to resolve problems. Uh, often we get work from our particular consultant, uh, free of charge just because of the relationship we've had so long. Uh, I, what it amounts to is to have this individual on staff would probably be a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar technical position to pay them. Also it'd be difficult for us in our small environment to sustain their skill set and the training to keep up to date on all the services. So they work with other districts in the area, Ferguson, Florissant, Hazelwood, uh, St. Louis University, providing the same level of service that they consult with for Parkway. Appoint links, a little different scenario, it, but do you, is that a?
Yeah, I think I think so, uh, so that you, do we typically then get about five hundred hours of work or it just depends?
We, um, depending on what tasks we require, we ask for them to give us a statement of work and how many hours that will be and then before we, they start work on it, we approve those hours and that statement, much like we would with, uh, a blanket purchase order for equipment or facilities who has contractors. for equipment or facilities who has contractors to come in and do piecemeal work as needed. So, that's the arrangement we have with them. Point Link is a vendor who has-- and when I first came here nine years ago, I was-- I witnessed a help desk call where a person called in, knew the district, and it took our help desk agent 20 minutes to explain all the calls the individual needed to make to get service, to get their telephone set up, to get access to the network, to get emailed, to get access to the student information system. Kind of scary. So, we asked them, Point Link, to set up a process whereby Human Resources enters a job code in our employee database, and from that job code, it establishes access to the network, to email, to PARZ, Online Curriculum Guide, Infinite Campus, and the access that they need for their students at that school. That takes about 20 minutes to do that process. So, our goal is, we want our teachers worrying about instruction and time with students, and not how they get access to the system. The other piece of that was, when a individual left the district, there was no process to go in and remove their access from these systems. So, if they'd been able to get into the network, they would've had the ability to do the same commands that they had before. With this process, when they're removed from the HR database, again, all their accesses are moved from all the systems and services throughout the district. Contracted with them to set it up so that students' access and files will automatically be established by the time they start school. So, an example is recently, the Robitell software approved for foreign language for South High. That would be a manual process to get about 1,200 students into that service so that they can-- and that would be a manual operation. If somebody was added or changed, it would be a manual operation. With this process, that automatically occurs so that the staff doesn't have to do that, and there's no delay in service. In the past, it could take days or weeks for a new student to get access to their files in the network. Now, that's a matter of a record, and we're testing it right now, and we plan to test it for summer school. So, this is an expensive process, but to be state-of-the-art and to make sure that our teachers know how to get access to all the systems, we feel it's very important to automate those processes. So, that's called an identity management process, or ID management process. And it's a-- we're still in the early stage of it, stages of it. We continually have enhancements as we add new applications, as we change services. So, the maintenance is to maintain, basically, the application that the vendor has developed. As we have improved the skill set of our programming staff, we have a plan to in-source that work from Point Link also. So, over the next couple of years, we look to where that expense would no longer be part of it, of our budget. And we have had a reduction over the last year of $9,000 to $10,000 from our previous contract with these consultants.
Have any arrangements been made too, to consider how this would interface with the new HR system?
Absolutely. We're going to meet with the vendor tomorrow to talk about what's it-- is it going to take to move our connections from SIMs to the new Munis system? Both the accesses for personnel and then the HR piece. Now, and our goal is that through that process, we will work with the vendor to migrate the changes ourselves so that we don't have to pay the consultant fee to do that in the future. And that's a constant challenge for us. I think the organization has evolved over time to the point where we're doing many more services internally, and that's always a goal. But I think another piece of this is the time and the knowledge to do this development is a very expensive process if we were to, you know, do all the work ourself initially. So, we have someone develop it, much like PARZ. PARZ was developed by our IBM partner, and in the early stages, we-- Now, we're completely self-maintaining and don't pay any consultant fees to anybody externally. And that's a constant challenge for us.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry if the reply was late in getting to you.
The Munis system that you mentioned, that's the new HR?
Yes, sir.
Software, is that right?
Well, it's HR, it's finance, it's account payable, it's a number of--
Our latest substantial investment.
Correct.
And is that offer better interoperability with existing systems than PARZ? Is that correct?
It's not related to PARZ at all. It's basically for financial records, for HR--
Oh, SIMs, I apologize.
Oh, yeah.
I'm shuffling my acronyms here.
It's a replacement for SIMs. SIMs was an old green screen product that we've had for a number of years. It's probably 12 to 15 years old, so it will replace that. And we've done a lot of that support that we've brought in. Both systems in parallel for a year or so until we can eliminate the SIM system. As a matter of fact, I just noticed that there'll be a board motion for SIMs maintenance next board meeting, or I hope there will be.
But not next year at this time, is that right?
No, sir, not again.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Castile?
Steve, when a program is implemented, such as PARZ, SIMs, or the HR program, and maybe I'm going to ask the board also, do we also apply a request for the vendor services such as we're requesting tonight at the time that the program is implemented and purchased? Or does it depend on which program is purchased? Because it seems like we'll approve a program, and then a year later, we are approving the vendor services. So, is there-- are these programs-- Let's say, okay, we're going to approve the program, let's also approve the vendor's service at the same time. Are they two different animals here?
They're two different things, and how it starts out is, when you get a bid for a product, you negotiate initial training, conversion, both of the data and of the inputs to that data. After that conversion is completed and up and running, you basically self-train, but, you know, these products constantly change. We have two people dedicated, well, almost four people really, dedicated to state reporting. So, their requirements change almost daily, which means that as we make changes to our student information system, for example, Infinite Campus, our-- if we didn't have maintenance, we wouldn't get those changes and corrections. So, there's an initial large investment to purchase the software, and then there's an ongoing, in some instance, pretty large investment to maintain that product. But the only way local needs is to pay that maintenance fee. We just don't have the resources to be the developers of a complex system like Infinite Campus or the Munis system. So, it is two pieces. You had another question, and I don't-- so, it was, how do we separate initial purchase from maintenance? And then I thought there was something--
Well, it kind of goes together. Basically, it was why, you know, if we have a program, why do we not purchase the service at the same time? And I think, basically, you answered that by saying that it's constant changes that need to be updated, so you have someone that's knowledgeable in that. But I do have another question. Approximately, how many IT programs do we have here in Parkway?
I would say in the neighborhood, as far as major applications--
Yes.
We have 37, but there's all kinds of pieces that are connected to that. You know, you have your EdLink that allows parents access to their bus routes. You have Infinite Campus, but you have the parent portal, which is an attachment to that. So, we have 37 major applications that, for those tech savvy, they're virtualized, so we save disk space, we save physical space. That's kind of the green terminology that they use today.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Van Meter.
All right, thank you.
And do I have a motion and a second to approve items 10.07A and B?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 6-0. For items 10.14 and 10.21, is that Mary? Thank you. Mary Mukler, HR Director.
Kind of confusing, isn't it, Ellen?
For me, everything's--
And I would ask the board if we could table these two policies, because one is for-- they both are professional staff, and they both say the same things. One is for certified full-time employees, and one is for administrators, certified administrators. So, if you'd allow me to bring that back to you on June 16th, I would appreciate it. The content is the same, it's the title, I think, that probably threw you off. Possibly, unless you have an additional question.
Well, I noticed that it was similar, but I guess my main question, which may be not that important, but it was the verbiage, "for other reasons." I mean, what constitutes "other reasons"?
Well, we've had employees who have asked-- Leave for reasons that husbands may be transferred, and they don't know if it's going to be a long period of time or not, and they want to take a leave of absence, and then sometimes they do return, and sometimes they don't return. That's one example. Another example, before my time, was a leave of absence that was approved for a teacher that her husband was going to someplace here in Missouri, I want to say Lake of the Ozarks, to be-- it was kind of an entrepreneurial business. They had young children. She wanted to accompany him to see if the business would, you know, get off the ground. It didn't, they did return. She still is currently teaching in Parkway. So, those are the two examples that I can give that I know.
I think what it means is, other than what's listed in the other policies--
Well, and because of sabbaticals and things like that.
Right. It's policies for certain types of leave and other policies.
Right. So, there's different-- there's been others that have been approved, but I just want you to know, there have been, some of these have been approved under this policy because they didn't fall in the other policy. I hate to keep saying the word "other," but I think you understand what I'm saying there.
I just basically wanted a couple of examples, just--
Those are--
Because the word "other" is so vague, and I thought, well, give me a couple examples of that. And also, I guess we got to stress that those are unpaid, right?
I'm sorry, the last--
Those are unpaid? Unpaid?
Yes, yes. So, if I could bring this back, these two on June 16th for final approval.
Do I understand you have some adjustments to make to the policies is why you--
Yes, they would be adjusted.
Okay.
For the certified employees--
Do we need a motion to table those?
And administrators.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to table items 10.14 and 10.21? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
11.01, approval of policy CCA, Organizational Chart. Call on Dr. Malito, Superintendent of Schools.
Yes, yearly, at this time of the year, we submit to the board for public review an organizational chart for the new school year. We have one presented to you tonight. It does show that an interim superintendent will be directing your district starting July 1, and another position, assistant to the superintendent, has not been filled for the last four or five years.
Are there any questions for Dr. Malito on the organizational chart? Hearing no questions, can I have a CCA organizational chart for 2010, 2011?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. 12.0 reports. First reading, can I get a drum roll or? Early findings from Project Parkway! Call on Desi Kirshoffer, Assistant Superintendent Secondary; Dr. Bonnie Maxey, Assistant Superintendent Elementary; Dr. Tim Hudson, Coordinator of Mathematics. And in response to Dr. Maxey's query, there is no two-minute clock on this--
Good evening, President Major, Board Members, Dr. Malito, and Ms. Calanda. We believe tonight is a significant milestone in our Project Parkway journey. We are pleased to represent hundreds of Parkway citizens and educators in presenting a report of the work that has been accomplished this year. And I also want to acknowledge all the administrators who came tonight because they have been so supportive of the work that we have-- this work that we've embarked upon, and many of them have been members of the committees and are so committed to it and have had many discussions in their schools in order for all members of the professional community to be aware and a part of and to understand what we are embarking upon. So, we really appreciate them being here tonight in support of this first reading. Just a little over five-- Years, to be exact. Five independent rural kindergarten through eighth-grade schools were consolidated, creating the Parkway School District. The directors of these independent school districts were motivated by a purpose, their mission, if you will, to provide a quality K-12 education program for the young people in the area. Those directors had a vision of how that would look. Over the years, we have transformed from a rural area to a large suburban school district. Thousands of students, citizens, educators have been involved in creating the Parkway School District, we now know, all with the purpose of providing a quality education for our youth. At this time, Parkway is in the process of developing their 2011 through 2016 Comprehensive Improvement Plan. This is an evaluation process developed by the State of Missouri, requiring school districts to evaluate their status every five years based on an identified set of standards, and to then establish goals for the next five-year cycle. The feedback we received from our last CSIP review indicated Parkway needed to develop a broad-based, ongoing collaboration process for our next cycle. And so, last year, we formulated a steering committee to develop a broad-based community engagement effort we now call Project Parkway. In considering best research practices, the steering committee determined to implement the backward design model for schooling. This was the model utilized in our recently completed curriculum revisions over the last five years. It made good sense to connect all of our district, school, and curriculum through the same design model. So, a partnership was formulated with the Authentic Education Consulting Firm. Its nationally recognized leader, Dr. Grant Wiggins, has served as our consultant throughout this past year. So, at this time, Desi's going to walk you through the steering committee work and the house that Parkway is reconstructing for its future.
Amy, thank you, Dr. Maxey. I am going to start talking about the steering committee before I get too far along with the steering committee. I want to just talk about the makeup of the steering committee and who is serving in that role, and kind of the complications behind some of that as well. When we were putting together the steering committee, we wanted district representatives and community representatives from all levels, departments, areas, and quite frankly, the steering committee was getting pretty large. So, we were trying to-- Have that major representation, but also put it in a manageable form. So, I think we did a pretty good job of including administrators, board member, teachers, community members, parents, and our goal leaders. Still larger than idea, but still representative of the community at large. Also, tonight, I'll be talking about the four major functions of the steering committee, which really to oversee the community engagement process, Project Parkway-- which really to oversee the community engagement process, Project Parkway, develop the process of the needs assessment, and develop the mission, vision, and learning principles, and then eventually, now moving into the phase of prioritizing the subcommittee findings. So going back to the work of the steering committee to oversee the community engagement process, the first step was inviting participants. And I think through our communications department, through some advertisement, invitations went out to the entire Parkway community. We really didn't know what kind of response we would get initially. And so the steering committee met and started the work about, okay, what's the selection process? Who gets to serve in these roles? And it was decided at one of our committee meetings that we would try to allow every participant, every person who responded to an invitation, to try to find them a role and work through this subcommittee. So the effort continued to grow. We had a great response and, like I said, didn't want to turn anyone down, so it turned out to be about over 350 members who started to participate in our needs assessment. And so getting to that needs assessment, looking at what kind of manageable format would we put that in place, it was decided that we'd use our current school board of education goals. We divided them into then focus areas and then subcommittees. And many of the folks that are in this room here tonight were leaders of either the goals, the focus areas, or subcommittee work. That would meet on our Project Parkway's that many of you had attended throughout this school year. So the work has been incredible. It's moved a lot of conversations forward. I think one of the, you know, the goals of the work was to do an audit of our systems and I think Mr. Camp earlier had mentioned Project Parkway in the process and how we had opened our doors in our schools and basically let anyone come in that wanted to, to audit our practices. And we're very vulnerable. I think one of it during the process, at least in my experience on my subcommittee, there was a huge temptation to already want to prioritize and start to brainstorm solutions and problem solve, and the reins had to be pulled back in many cases. When we would get results, we wanted to throw out a solution right away, which seems pretty natural, but I wanted to remind everybody the work of the steering committee this year and the work of the subcommittees was to. Tonight with our needs being identified. The other major function of the steering committee was the work of developing the foundation. So we were working on the mission, the vision, the learning principles, and I'll talk about a little bit, there's going to go into some details about where we are with that tonight, but just to give you the overview, building the foundation of our house started with the mission and vision. And so that was the drive of the steering committee. So getting back, our mission was basically, we're saying that is our purpose. That is, and probably the most exciting thing about the mission in the work of the steering committee that I've encountered was the focus on what the student outcomes are. And it was a student-driven mission versus what we as adults do. So there's been some change of focuses and I think that that's going to show how our -- the other thing was our vision, which will list our priorities and our learning principles and staying with the theme of learning principles. And then finally, you'll see some work towards some commitments. That'll still be in progress, but that'll be what the adults do. That'll be their part and their promise as we continue to develop that foundation. The other thing that is up here is for the subcommittee to, or for the steering committee to do, is to look at the subcommittee findings and then use this mission, the vision, the learning principles to, as a guide, to start prioritizing. And so that's currently where we are and that, as I know that you, if you haven't, you've, I think you did receive your binders, but some of the collective work of the subcommittee finding, the rubric basically is, is this going to fit with our mission and vision and learning principles and where and how, and make sure that we are a mission-driven district. And so that is the steering committee. And now for a little bit more on the background about mission, I'd like to introduce you, a parent of current Parkway pillar and a steering committee member, Nan Johnson. Nan?
As a Parkway parent and a volunteer for 14 years, it is really an honor to serve on the steering committee and to share the work with mission with you this evening. From the moment I opened Wiggins' book, I was thrilled to be part of this. It's very exciting. What we learned very early was that it all starts with mission. If we didn't get mission right, how could we possibly set goals and priorities for our schools and classrooms? So our first question was, as a school district, what are we in the business to accomplish? Two key ideas resonated with me as we learned about what mission was and what it wasn't. First, mission should focus on not about what the adults in Parkway are doing, it's about what our students are learning and accomplishing. The second is that mission should define the unique role school has in our community. We all care about kids. Parents and police and doctors and teachers all want kids to be happy, safe, healthy, and successful. But what is Parkway's unique and primary responsibility? My kids have been happy and safe in Parkway schools, but that isn't why Parkway exists. My husband and I sent our kids to Parkway for an education. So as the steering committee came to understand the purpose of mission, we had to let go of some things that were very near and dear to our hearts, but we found that many of these noble ideas such as personal responsibility could be best expressed in vision. We read and incorporated valuable input from all of our stakeholders, including students. We worked and reworked mission into the best way to communicate the reason we exist. So if our -- you might want to, can anybody click there? Thank you. We ensure all students, this is a bold statement, but mission is an ideal. It's what we continually strive for. Capable, curious, and confident, our carefully chosen words and their inclusion is very deliberate. These adjectives best describe what we want to see in learners of all ages in Parkway. It is what a school district's business should be and what is within their control. And we parents really need your help cultivating these things in our children. This is what they mean to me. Capable means our kids have the knowledge and skills needed to live independently and successfully in the world. The list of skills and vision is an awesome set of capabilities, which you'll hear about. Curiosity is a natural state of mind that needs to be fostered. As a mom, when our own children were very young, I looked for signs of curiosity in their play as an indication of thinkers are curious about something, and I want my kids to be great thinkers. Confident learners do not view difficult challenges as impossible obstacles. They persist, they don't give up. Confidence and their ability to figure things out and move forward is something we want to see in our kids. So if students are capable, curious, and confident learners, they will be able to understand and respond to all challenges, academic, work-related, life-related, and challenges we can't even imagine yet. Learner, not student, and the phrase "ever-changing world" need to be part of our mission. We want our graduates to be able to adapt and to learn new things. We've all heard that many of the top in-demand jobs of 2010 did not exist in 2000. This is a good argument to graduate learners and not just students. But if our kids are able to understand and respond to challenges they face, not only in school, but well beyond graduation, we can ---- they received in Parkway, and we will have accomplished our mission.
This year, the Riverbend staff joined in the Project Parkway conversations by keeping three essential questions in front of us at all times. What do we believe about student learning and achievement? Do our everyday practices support our beliefs? And how can we support one another's professional growth? And as a building leader, I also pose questions of myself. How do we bring our individual perspectives together? And how do we bring Riverbend's perspectives to align with the district? Launching the year and the conversation with an activity around the book Zoom, we structured the work of the year in a unit format, working backwards from our goal, to establish a strong community of adult learners, developing individually and collectively, and thereby promoting success of all students. We remain the same all year and we worked hard to align our staff time to our end goal, whether it be in faculty meetings, professional development days, or team meetings. We invited district personnel well grounded in the work of Project Parkway to work with us and help us make meaningful connections. This helped us to keep the house as the focus of our professional growth. A reflective look back on the year shows evidence of every staff member being involved in conversations around mission, vision, and the learning principles, and what these could and would look like in every aspect of Riverbend. I'll give it to Kim Brandon.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. This is Bonnie McCracken. Vision background. As Nan stated, mission is a bold statement. It's an idea. It is what we continually strive for, and it clarifies our priorities and sharpens our focus. And to talk about is what makes the mission a reality. In much the same way, a blueprint makes clear to everyone involved in the building of a home, all that must be accomplished before the final inspection takes place, so too does our vision. It guides us by identifying what we must see in our schools and eventually our graduates that will help us in accomplishing our mission. It gives us direction. As the steering committee, we have spent a great deal of time wrestling with each of the words of our mission statement, and Nan did a great job of just even kind of talking about how she as a parent had reflected on that. But we wrestled with these in order to most clearly identify what each of these words mean to us. And the 10 statements of our vision are the product of these efforts. Our vision, much like the blueprint, shows us what a capable, curious, and confident student must look like in the classroom and beyond. And it identifies the evidence we must look for in our students to demonstrate understanding and the ability to respond to all few priorities. This will guide us in accomplishing our purpose. I'm going to pass this over to Kevin Mayby, and he'll talk about it in the school.
Thank you. The vision can serve as a curriculum for Parkway teachers to implement. One of the essential questions that Grant Wiggins has posed from the beginning of Project Parkway is, where do long-term mission goals get lost in the day-to-day business of school? Just as a language arts curriculum can keep me focused on language arts goals, Parkway's vision keeps me focused on the long-term goals of our district every day. Each of the vision bullets can be unpacked to guide instruction that will undoubtedly help our students respond to the challenges of our ever-changing world. For instance, our vision says, "We succeed when all our students and graduates are always seeking to understand the views, values, and cultures of others." This skill can be taught, assessed, and evaluated in my classroom. I have created, just as a rubric measures other skills and knowledge, I am responsible for teaching and then evaluating. Similar to the MAP test and the end-of-course exams, my rubric is on a four-point scale, where a four means a student has advanced abilities in a skill area, a three means he or she is proficient, a two signifies basic ability, and a one is considered below basic. Mixed in with my language arts instruction and assessment are activities designed to help my students better understand how their actions and words can reflect their understanding of the views, values, and cultures of others. This is especially critical when reading literature, where students need to take on the perspective of characters from different societies and time periods. After I provide instruction for this skill, I provide assessment opportunities for my students to show whether they have advanced, proficient, basic, or below-basic skills when it comes to understanding the views, values, and cultures of others. I've created rubrics like this and believe each vision bullet is measurable and designed in a way that allows teachers to help students meet the goals of our mission. I'm going to hand it off to my colleague, Bridget Brown.
Thanks, Kevin. Mission and vision are Parkway-specific. They are what we agree we are in the business to accomplish. The next layer of the house brings clarity to the conditions under which we will most likely see these results. This layer of science, the learning principles, outlines the conditions under which optimal learning can occur. These are observable in our classrooms and confirmed by educational research. Adopting a set of confirmed learning principles will help Parkway move to a place where we can depersonalize teaching as we hold one another accountable with a favorite catchphrase of Grant Wiggins, which is, "Nothing personal, but..." Research presented by such influential thinkers such as Ron Brant, John Bransford, John Marzano, Richard Strong, Grant Wiggins, and J. McTie shaped our conversations and are incorporated into the principles we bring forward to you tonight. These nine statements represent the very best thinking of the steering committee with input from schools and departments across our district. And with that, I would like to introduce Jenny Markwart.
Thank you. Quote that Tim used in one of the steering committee meetings that I shared with my staff really helped to solidify and take us to the next step as we did our work at North High. And I'd like to read it to you. "As to methods, there may be a million and then some, but principles are few. The man who grasps principles can successfully select his own methods. The man who tries methods ignoring principles is sure to have trouble." I think that that really does explain what we are trying to do as a district and within our school. North High used the backward planning model to develop a unit plan for how we would implement our mission. After having been on the steering committee, I went back over the summer and pulled off the faded mission and vision statement that was hanging in the faculty lounge at North High. You couldn't read the names anymore. And I thought, I think this is a very good visual for people to see why it's really important for us to renew frequently the mission and vision. And so we spent the first semester, by February, we were ready to have a solid, rough draft of our mission and vision so we could move to, as Bridget said, the learning principles, which is really the heart of the discussion about what happens in a classroom, what happens throughout a school, what happens in every program within a school, what are the conditions and the environment that the adults create. So this is where the adults come into play. Mission and vision are about what do that cause learning to happen. And so as North High went through the mission and vision process, we felt in the end that it was important for us to go through that process and develop our own mission and vision, which complement the district mission and vision, but are specific to North High. And so now we are at the place where we created some learning principles of our own and we have matched them against the district, and we're finding many similarities, thankfully. And that is because they are rooted in research. As Bridget mentioned, all of the researchers that have been cited as the basis for developing the district learning principles. So we are now at the point, next week when we have our final faculty meeting for the year, we will have a solid draft of our mission and vision and a first draft of our learning -- we will spend the first semester really talking about, having the conversations that Bridget referenced, about what should this look like then in a classroom? What are the conditions that teachers across the building, regardless of the content that you teach, what are the conditions that should be in place in order to cause learning? And I think Tim is going to speak next.
As you've just heard from my colleagues, it is a very exciting time to be in Parkway. I want to thank the Board for your strong support of this work. And before I begin, I also want to extend my gratitude to two people who, from the very beginning, have been instrumental in bringing Project Parkway this far, but whose voice you haven't heard in this presentation, and that's Dr. Malito and Jennifer Sissel. Their impact on Project Parkway will impact our students, classrooms, schools, and district for many years to come. It is a privilege steering this next phase of Project Parkway, and I will keep my comments brief so that we can move to the next phase of this meeting. Last week, you received a binder, a very sizable binder, the binder, that is the culmination of thousands of hours of work from hundreds of members of the Parkway community. The binder represents our best attempt to condense just a vast quantity of information. And before we go further, we'd like to watch even the further condensed version, the brief video that we developed for Project Parkway that many of you have probably seen. video that we developed for Project Parkway that many of you have probably seen, just to reframe our minds as we go to this next part. So that is a small fraction of the findings that are in the binder, really the ones that would fit on a small cart. Everything else is going to be much longer to read, which is all right. The Project Parkway Steering Committee members received the same binder that you received. They received it tonight. And the next steps are to consider the data, review the identified needs, and determine priorities and goals for the next five years. The steering committee has begun to discuss if these needs will best support accomplishment of the mission. And addressing these needs will be a large part of the next phase of Project Parkway in August. And it certainly won't be easy. There's a broad scope of needs, as you saw in the video and have seen in the binder, wide range of different needs, a lot of variance. The steering committee will be meeting on June 9th and 10th to begin identifying priorities, and would like the board's input regarding criteria for prioritizing those needs. For example, two criteria that we know the steering committee will be considering are the financial impact, as well as the alignment with mission. And the steering committee would like the board to provide guidance and direction to this process by providing answers to these following questions. What criteria would the board like the steering committee to consider? Of the various criteria, should any of them carry more weight than others? What needs, if any, are urgent priorities for the board? And are there any needs that the board is not interested in considering? And then fifth, what needs or questions, if any, would the board like to consider that have not been discussed? We had 30 subcommittees. Certainly, that doesn't span the whole range of possible needs or questions that we could investigate for our long-range planning. As you can see from this timeline slide, the steering committee will need that guidance before June 9th. We have the board vote. It's up for a vote on June 16th of this year for the mission, vision, and learning principles. And then, looking long-term, May 18th of next year is the final report seeking approval for the 2011-16 goals. It all looks so nice and easy on that little slide. Just enjoy that for a moment. Thank you very much for your time and your continued support, and thank you to my colleagues who have been here this evening for the presentation tonight and for our panel. We are focused on quality outcomes for our learners, and we're moving ahead, designing the future. And now I'll turn it back over to Desi Kirchhafer. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we just want to go ahead and turn it over to the board for any questions. Someone in this room is going to be able to answer.
I guess if we could start with our steering committee member, Mrs. Mogerman.
Ms. Sortino unfortunately is absent. He's on the steering committee also. When did this start? It's all a blur to me. When was our first steering committee meeting?
Our first steering committee was February of 2009.
So it's been 15 months, 16 months? So tonight, we got the cliff-nosed version of 15 months, 16 months of work by the steering committee, and it looked so easy. You did a great job explaining it. And I guess what I want to impress on the board is, we came up, first of all, with the mission statement. Those words were very closely, very carefully chosen. It doesn't look now what it looked like a year ago, even six months ago. So as we consider approval next meeting, I just hope you'll remember that the committee has hashed this out and minced the words and defined the words, and not duked it out, but we've had some good discussions.
There were some ugly moments, Steve.
Yes. I wouldn't say ugly. Not ugly. No one yelled. And as we move ahead, I just hope the board remembers that. So it seemed like we had so much time, and now crunch time is here. So I hope if we have questions about the verbiage, that we'll get those out now, rather than waiting till the June meeting, because we need to get those worked out, any questions we have.
Mr. Jacob?
Yeah, I think you've had a big influence, Desi, on a lot of this. Every time I see Tim Dutton, his hair... I mean Hudson. Tim, hooah!
We can work on that. I've got a razor in the locker room.
Tim's doing good. One of the things I would just ask for you to do, I don't know how you meld this into this, but often in politics, they have something called a sunshine law, or sunset law. And when it's used, it's pretty effective, because it makes you come back and look at things. For example, in the video you showed there, and also down at South, when you presented some of the findings, 46 different diversity programs in Parkway. I don't know what all of those are, but it just begs to say, can't we get those streamlined some? And the other question is, are they working? So that's something I would like to see us do, and somehow build it into our framework and our thinking, that we need to continually be looking at ourselves, not five years from now, but as we're moving through it, asking, you know, let's do that with Project Parkway too, and say, is what we're doing right? And not have to wait five years to make a change, maybe make a course correction earlier if we need to.
Absolutely. I think part of this process, and one of our earlier comments, was that this needs to be an ongoing process, that it's just not a one-time deal when we throw out our goals. But how do we continue to use the community, and to use our mission and vision as a sounding board, and make sure we're practicing and mission-driven? So I think the steering committee would completely agree with you to continue a needs assessment.
Very happy and very pleased with the effort from so many people and so much interest. And we know we've got a long ways to go, but it's just marvelous to be at this point.
But they're only here because they thought we were going to talk about recycling. I think that's...
Mr. Kirchhafer, your time is up. You will receive a reply in writing.
In many ways.
I have a question for Jenny, and maybe for Kim. Jenny, you've been working on this now with your staff for quite some time, and I'd like to know what their real reactions are, not what we all want to hear, but what the truth of the matter is. Because I know a lot of people could feel threatened with all of this new stuff coming out, especially some of our veteran teachers who've been doing a fabulous job along without all this.
I would say, I would say there is a range of responses. I think that we, throughout the year, would employ opportunities for feedback, because that is important for us to know where are people with understanding of process, where are people with the specific words that we collected, and the difference, but more for more. And I think that there are, right now, teachers are very, very settled with our mission. Our working towards is getting a clearer picture of what that will look like in a classroom, and what that will look like in a particular course, and how will we know when to achieve that? And so that's where the learning principles come into play, because then you are creating the conditions for the learning to happen, and you can then determine if your vision is going to come true. So in our last, in our last, I think it was in a March faculty meeting, when we did the ICS, because everybody goes to the library and they respond to a people survey, and they had to sit on, and one was, how do you see the North High mission changing your curriculum? How do you see the new North High mission changing the way we allocate resources? So kind of like off the house, how do you see the North High changing? How do you see... And the option that they had is either to write in what they felt, or mark, I'm not sure. And so there were probably a third of the teachers who were still saying, I'm not exactly sure. And so I think that that's very often, is that there are still people who are saying, I feel like we need to talk more about this, and...
Thank you. Can I go on?
Please.
I love, Kevin, how you described how you use what you've learned in Project Parkway in your class, and how you teach it, and how you assess it. Because I don't think that we've gotten to that specific point yet where the teachers really understand that, but I think that was just crystal clear to all of us. You know, it's one thing to see it on paper, it's another thing to hear about how it works in action. So I think that'd be a great little speech to reverberate throughout the district. Question. We're teaching our teachers and our administrators about all this stuff, but are we teaching our students what we're expecting of them, and how to achieve those goals?
I can speak to that, that we, as we go through this process at North, we have involved the parents in a couple of different physical coffees or PTO meetings, and got feedback about the drafts of the mission and vision. And we have used target student groups to talk about this, for our mission and vision. But that is really one of the big pieces that we are trying to look at, is from the perspective of program, not just classrooms, but, for example, many of you were at our Special Olympics, and that's, and all of the schools have Special Olympics events. And so I see that, as we get volunteers to volunteer for the Special Olympics, and as we move through next school year, we will help them see how Special Olympics connects to our mission, and the word of social responsibility, you know, that this is part of what it means to be a socially responsible person, and that's why we do Special Olympics, not just because you want to spend the day outside, you know, a nice free day. And so I think that we will have to be very intentional about how we teach the mission and vision to our students as well.
Some of it, I would say, would play out through our curriculum, some of the conversations. As you've seen curriculum cycles come through, you've seen it designed in the same type of format. What will the outcome be in the end? And I think when we walk in our classrooms and make observations, and you see an enduring understanding list on the board, you get the idea of the big picture. So I don't know if it's going to be as explicitly taught with the students, or it has been, at least up until this point, it has not been. But I think you see it in practice in the classroom by the kids understanding the big idea of what they're learning. And I think that's probably the important part to keep in mind when relating it to curriculum, that you can walk into a classroom and ask the question, what are you doing? Why are you doing it? And why is it important? And how will you know when you get it? And so those kind of questions will feed into our learning principles.
Desi?
Not too long ago, we were in a meeting with the Public Relations Advisory Board, and this same video was shown to them. And one of the things that came out, and I was thinking, how do we make our public aware? Just by seeing the video, they didn't understand it. Those of us that are part of Parkway and have been involved in this process, we could draw all kinds of things from it, because we had a framework for it. So in teaching our public about Project Parkway, we need to think of, when they see things like that, they're not aghast, or wondering, well, what are you trying to tell me?
I think the video is, without a context, the video would be tough to kind of understand or maybe...
We thought it was great, and then all of a sudden, they started making comments. We thought, wow, I see your point of view. You haven't been through this with us.
Right, right. You're right. I think anytime you share something like that, somehow, we've got to frame the context of where it comes from. And I think we can jump back to how we have opened our doors to this process, and said, we're not hiding anything. And we want to, you know, one of the first steering committee meetings, when Grant Wiggins addressed us, he used Jim Collins' good-to-great quote about confronting the brutal reality. And I think that's what we did this year.
And I think the purpose of the video was for, the audience was the Project Parkway people, and it was to condense issues that the... in a brief manner, so we didn't have to go through tons of paper. It was just a quick way to show some of the...
And to do a cross-check with the other goals, the other goal areas that were in the group, knew what the subcommittees were about, but didn't know what some of those findings were. So to quickly organize a way to display those findings. So yes.
Okay. Dr. Malito?
Mr. Major and Harvard Board of Education, let me offer some observations to the public and to you. First of all, as in the video it said, one of the last cards said, "It is in your hands." It is in our hands from tonight through June 16th for the next four or five years to accomplish what this group wants to do, is to put the focus on children and learning in Parkway, and make it a world-class school district. To give you some quick background, how this all got started, and I don't know if these individuals remember this, but I got a call in August of 2008 from Kathy Blackmore, saying that I must talk with Jennifer Sissel, who's out here in the east with a man named Grant Wiggins. So I called a seven o'clock meeting, as I typically do, and we talked, and they convinced me that this was the next historic thing for Parkway. You probably don't remember this, but on September 19th, 2008, we sent you a two-page memo, and a Friday memo on this. You were so impressed, you asked your board president, Mrs. Mogerman, at that time, on September 22nd, to meet with me and Jennifer Sissel to go further on Project Parkway. And then on... And then on November 13th, 2008, you approved a three-year commitment with Grant Wiggins to bring him in a year later to begin the process of mission, vision, and learning principles. And what you have in front of you in this audience are teachers and parents and citizens and coordinators and directors and managers and teachers and early childhood people and people from the Communications Department, which are really... take you to the Olympics and the World Series and win you a gold medal in the next two or three years, as they will make you nationally known, world famous, and world-class in the next three or four years. As I start the beginning, it's in our hands and it's in your hands to accomplish that. I think it can be done. Best of luck to all of you and to all that started. I am very proud to have worked with you. Thank you, Dr. Malito.[658.87][658.87](Applause).
Mrs. Mogulman?
The questions that you put in front of us, that you want us to answer, I hope you're not expecting an answer tonight.
No.
Is this what we're going to focus on at our board retreat? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Is that when we hope to have these questions at least somewhat answered? Yeah, okay.
That is correct, yes.
All right, good. That takes a little pressure off.[688.62][688.62](Laughter).
Okay. Mrs. Castile?
Thank you. I just have to compliment everybody. This is fantastic for Parkway. Couple of words that come to mind, the learning principles, take that first. Along with the word responsibility, I think I read on the website, there was a comment made that the word responsibility was not actually in the mission statement, but the concept was there. Social responsibility, aside from academics, how is Project Parkway going to address the students learning the difference between truth versus fiction, which we heard earlier this evening?
I'm going to... and critical consumers of information and ideas, is how I would answer that question, that that is, that is the thinking behind that very specific mission statement. Because what you're talking about is in the vision, is what we have to see in our schools day-to-day, so that we meet that mission, so that when they walk out of our school system, they are, as you talked about, literate and critical consumers of information. Are they always there yet? Maybe not, but that's what we are working on. There was definitely a lot of passion, but we are definitely working on that.
Thank you. And to be inclusive, we do have the board secretary at the far end of the table, who has probably seen more than one strategic planning evolution.[798.12][798.12](Laughter) Mrs. Calanda, do you have any comments or questions?
Speaking of... for the entire board, when I second the notion that there is an element of soul-bearing in this process, I commend everyone who has participated in that and looked at themselves in the mirror probably and said, nothing personal, but certainly the members of this board have had those conversations. And in the coming months and years, we're going to continue to ask ourselves those questions. Do our level best to provide the criteria and that best reflects our thinking and priorities. And I think that's the next step for us. And I think going forward with Project Parkway, and it's been touched on from a couple of angles this evening, Mr. Jacobs' comments about this pretty novel coming from the Army guy, but I'll commend him for that. And also the questions regarding the role of teachers to date and the role of teachers going forward. I certainly think we are at a, at a critical point, and there are a lot of changes going to happen in leadership and at the deck plates, to borrow a Navy term. And I think the answers we're looking for reside with our teaching professionals, and some of the answers are going to be with other staff members. And I think something I heard Dr. Wiggins say early on, when the mission statement has meaning for the bus drivers and the custodians and the students, the problem will be where we want to be when that happens. So thank you all very much for the incredible work to date, and we didn't really get all the way to commitments, but my compliments to the steering committee. I like what I see so far, and I certainly, as a guardian of process, I don't want to force any conclusions, but I did already get my Project Parkway tattoo with culture of accountability on it, so I don't know if that...
Thank you, President Major.
Thank you very much.
And I wanted to, thank you. Just a couple of quick acknowledgements, but first of all, I want to thank the Board of Education for their support to this process, and I know that the faces that we see before us in the room are faces that we've seen on many Monday nights as well as Wednesday nights and in other events, and throughout the whole process too. So thank you to the Board of Education, and a special thanks to Dr. Malito for his service in Parkland. Thank you, Dr. Malito. Also, a special thanks to everyone in the room who did stick around throughout the night. I know that there's giving up evenings with families and school events, so thank you all for being here tonight, it's much appreciated. And finally, someone who hasn't been mentioned, who's been instrumental through the Communications Department, is Paul Tandy, who, someone called for resignation or termination earlier, but Paul, we want to keep you around, so thank you very much for all your help, your department, and Nikki Stover. And from the early onset of this, someone who has just led us through this process and is moving on in another direction, but has been instrumental in this work, whose voice hasn't been heard tonight, and Tim mentioned earlier, but I want to give a special thanks one more time to Jennifer Sissel. Thank you, Jennifer.[1066.16][1066.16](Applause).
There she is. I heard it.[1069.16][1069.16](Laughter). Outstanding presentation. We look forward to the hard decisions we face in the coming months. Thank you. Mary Mukler, HR Director.
Don't they, don't they realize there'll be a karaoke session with Calendar Girl?
Good evening, Mr. Major. Vice President Jacob, board members, Dr. Malito, Mrs. Calanda. Obviously, May 26th of 2010 might be on their mind a little bit more than 11-12 and 12-13, but as we have a process in Parkway to develop our calendar in advance for our community, for our parents, for our citizens, the Parkway NEA and administration met in February, and I'd like to thank the members of our committee, PNEA President Jawanda Bozeman, Vice President Julie Pepper, from the high school Melody Barger, Elementary Nancy Northley, and the administrative team coordinator, staff development Liz Morrison, Debbie McMillan Elementary, Bill Senti Middle School, and Travis Fast. And in building a two-year calendar, we took in considerations from a survey that was done two years ago. We have not done a calendar survey in two years. But some of the same calendar considerations exist where parents, staff, especially students would like to start after Labor Day, get out before Memorial Day, have two weeks at winter break, and have at least a week at spring break. Those are pretty consistent when we send out a survey. Unfortunately, it doesn't meet the Department of Elementary and Secondary criteria, nor does it meet some of the other criteria. Some of the criteria that I want you to keep in mind as we talk about, and I'll walk through each calendar, is being part of North Central, Middle School, DESI recommends 174. We have a contract with our association for 191 teaching contract days. We need to make sure that we have records days at the end of both semesters for high school teachers and at the end of each trimester for elementary, for elementary and middle school teachers and early childhood also. We also want to make sure that we are looking at when the MAP testing window is, and typically it is the last week of March and at least three weeks in April. I guess it's been four years ago, maybe five years ago, that we started finals before winter break, to the great applause of high school teachers and administrators and students. I think this might be our fourth year. I did calendar one year, I know, when it was, when we were still doing finals after winter break. Nonetheless, it tends to be a fairly positive move that Parkway made, and we also aligned ourselves with other districts around the St. Louis County area who had finals before winter break. So with that, if we could take a glance at the 11-12 calendar. Last year, we had a kind of a format change, if you remember, for the 10-11 calendar, where we put everything on one page. I will work with Public Affairs when these calendars are adopted to make sure that we put the religious observances also as part of the calendars, even though they don't fit on the front side of this, that they will go out simultaneously. You see in August where we would... three days for teacher workshops, and we would also like to follow the 9-10 calendar, excuse me, the 10-11 calendar of the 15th, no school for students or teachers. Secretaries would still be working, 12-month employees would be working. And it does two things. One, it allows youngsters to have a Tuesday beginning rather than a Monday beginning, a four-day week, and it also captures us a day that teachers are not working, so that to fulfill their 191 contract, they fulfill it at the end of the school year. And I'll note that when we talk about May. One thing our committee talked in length about, and Liz Morrison being part of our committee, is we are, which is a great thing, we're starting to get MAP data back sooner and sooner. So rather than having the PD day, as it typically has been, we thought that let's try this in September with the four-day weekend that parents tend to like for Professional Development Day and put it with Labor Day weekend. So hence you see September 2nd as a full-day professional development. October would not have any breaks, and we talked about that, but we still felt it was good to have a Professional Development Day closer to the beginning of the school year, if indeed we could spend time with MAP data. Then in November, you see the typical end of the first trimester and a Professional Development Day and Records Day for K, pre-K through eight, and a Professional Development Day for 9-12. You will see the 23rd, 24th, and 25th for Thanksgiving break, and the 23rd is to compensate for parent-teacher conference days, or the date where the teachers spend in the evening for parent-teacher conferences. And then in December, you will see that winter break would begin on the 22nd. We would have three days of finals before winter break, the 19th through 21st. Not quite a two-week break. The students would come back on the 4th, teachers would come back on the 3rd, and that would be Professional Development for K, pre-K through eight, and Records Day for 9-12. I'd also like to mention, going back to November of 11, excuse me, because I want to say this so I don't forget, Jawanda informed me there will not be any more state teachers' meetings held, and they're usually held on a Friday in November, and it's usually about the second Friday, or second Friday or third Friday, usually I think it's the second Friday. So that will capture another day that teachers in November, as they did before, but it will not be where some teachers are in the building doing Professional Development, and some teachers are at the state teachers' meeting. So the state NEA conference as we know it will not be in existence in the future. And I'm going to say, I think because of cost containment and things like that, am I right in saying that, Jawanda?
And more schools doing their own Professional Development.
And more schools doing their own Professional Development. So if I could move on then to January, where we see, on January 16th, we start from the Senate bill where we have to designate six days for inclement weather. You see the first one there is on the 16th, Martin Luther King. Obviously, that's very, very early. If we would have, you know, four snow days by January 16th, that would be kind of a record, but again, we would, we have that day down for kindergarten registration. And February, you see a Records Day at the end of the trimester, and then in March, you will see the 16th is a day to, again, per the PNEA contract, to compensate for parent-teacher conferences. We have left off on this calendar, on both calendars, on 11-12 and 12-13, where it says parent-teacher conference week, because we're finding many of our schools are doing conferences, some of them are doing at the mid-trimester. And so it's not necessarily a designated week for the conferences, because we're finding our schools that are making those decisions as to when they feel their community would like to have the conferences. You see spring break the third week of March. It does match several districts. Most districts do not have their calendars out yet. I just need to let you know for 11-12, and for sure for 12-13, they don't. And then you see in April, another Development. And that date, we wanted to make sure we stayed away from Good Friday, because we want teachers in Professional Development. We do not want teachers taking off for a religious holiday on a Professional Development Day. And then in May, you see where we would have our three days of finals, and teachers would end on the 25th. And if we would have zero to three snow days, you will see that the youngsters would get out earlier, but the teachers still go to the 25th to fulfill their 191 contract. This is kind of enticing to staff development, because we could start some summer development if indeed we had zero snow days or one snow days. The youngsters could get out, I'll say, earlier, but the teachers must go until the 25th. Where it says May 24th, a half-day, that could be a full day, because we still have the teachers on the 25th, where they could complete their record-keeping for the end of the trimester or end of the semester. Okay? As I walk through, I'll ask questions first, anything on 11-12? 12-13 calendar is going to mirror this very, very closely as I walk through it. Beth?
September 21st, you have shaded, and I'm assuming that's the end of the first six-week grading period or... six-week grading period or marking period, but you don't have a definition for that on the side.
It's finals, 19th, 20th, and 21st of December you're talking about.
September.
September, excuse me. It is the mid-trimester for
Down at the bottom here. Right. The other things that you have shaded, though, you defined on the side.
Say that one more time, I didn't hear you.
The other things that
[inaudible]
as to why it's shaded, what the shading means to the left or to the right, but you just don't have it written.
Oh, I see. And I see it down at the bottom.
It is down at the bottom, but that's not consistent with the rest.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you. Very good, thank you.
Okay. That's number one. Number two, I emailed you about this, but I don't remember what you said. You have marked in red January 31st kindergarten registration day, and red is supposed to mean that there's no school.
Oh, no, students attending. Thank you. You're absolutely right.
That needs to be maybe a shaded or
You know, and I truly do appreciate it. I can't tell you how many different people's eyes around have been around this. Supers Council, Maureen Dennis, all kinds of different people. But thank you very much, I appreciate that. We just need to
I'm great at finding things that other people do. It's my own, my own type of graphical errors I can never find.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that. Now, the 31st, what you'll see then is just the 31st. It won't be shaded, it won't be in any color, we just will put kindergarten registration.
All right. And May 24th, we've spoken before about how I feel about
Right.
I think it's a waste of resources to send kids to school for half a day. It's basically saying you're not going to learn anything today.
Okay.
And even when the textbooks are turned in, the desks are emptied out, our teachers have a lot they can teach our children.
Okay. If you would like, before I bring it back for the final reading on June 16th, with the two suggestions that you have made here on September 21st, and delete the red area on January 31st, because the teachers must go May 25th, we could just, where it says three snow, three days, May 24th can just be a full day there.
For K through eight.
For K through eight, yes. Yes.
Pre?
I'm sorry. Pre-K, pre-K.
Thank you.
I tried very hard while I was standing here, Mr. Major, said I kept saying pre-K. I didn't think that time would still be here. And then I'll walk through 12-13.
Clarification on January 31st, there are children in class that they
There are, yes. It should not be in red, Helen. It should not be in red. Yeah, it's, in fact, it's really nice for our new kindergarteners to see what school looks like when they come and register on January 31st.
Well, Dr., I think the schools have a fourth grade body that they
I think different ones do different things. The nurses there, the principal, he'll greet them, and some kindergarten teachers also are available. Okay. Chris?
I was just going to make a comment on the 12-13 before. I think there's going to be some parents that are wondering [inaudible] 16th or 17th of the year, why am I starting on the 14th all of a sudden? I know it's going to come up, they're going to say
Yes, I know. I think, I think, Dr. You know, we're still following the same pattern.
Right.
But you're right, it's the 14th versus the 16th. It's the 17th. This coming school year is the 17th. Here's what happens, though, if we don't, if we don't do that, and I just, for you all to think about. If we don't, let's say we start on the 16th, but we still want to have finals before winter break, it makes our semesters more unbalanced. For high school classes, that's probably not too big a deal. For high school classes that are semester classes, if you have, let's see, the balance of these, it's 80, on the 12-38 and 90, so it would end up being like 85 and 93. If you look at the little box on the bottom of the 12-13, if we would start three days later, that you know, and we could, you know, think about finals after winter break so that we could continue to balance the semester. I think we want to understand. It's doable. It means that we wouldn't go as many days first semester. If we started on August 15th or 16th, then we would just, which is doable.
Well, I guess, on the balance question, and maybe Desi would like to address this, but for the, I think, we're probably mainly concerned with end-of-course exams. Okay.
And just a general
[inaudible]
Really, only by college course for a semester right now, they have a smaller impact.
Okay. And is there a set window for those EOCs, the mandated ones? I mean, are those given literally the last day of class?
No, no.
They're actually, the window is probably three weeks prior.
It's not the same as a final
So in that regard, it's almost, that would be almost transparent, whether you had a 92 or 88 day, or 95 day and 86 day semester.
For the EOC, you're right.
So, so, just looking at that aspect.
But, but Desi, content of a course, if you would have a course that was a semester course, and if you had 85 days versus 92 or three days, you're not going to be able to cover as much content.
Just what the days that
And we don't know
We worked with teachers on the calendar, but prior to this calendar, one of the concerns was trying to keep the semesters as balanced as possible. There was a little, seemed to be a little give that, okay, we can go with second semester a little bit, a few more days because of the most of the testing that occurs in the second semester. So it was felt that you lost some instructional days. But I think that even is, there's a balance of that, too, because I think with the embracing of more assessments in our schools that were recognized, that that is part of our curriculum as well.
And most of our snow days, most of them do occur second semester. You know, there might be something in December, but most of our snow days, the pattern has been second semester. But, but Chris, I understand exactly what you're talking about. So if the board wants to start a day later or two days later, that is doable. But just know then, order second semester, and then we tag those two days on in May. Okay?
11-12 calendar has 86 days in the first semester and 92 days in the second semester.
That's correct. It's definitely not as
Six days.
Yeah.
So there's six days right there, and then, you know, there's two days different. But, you know, we could go the 15th and then just end up, you know, going two days longer in
The other thing I want to mention to the board is, in the PNEA agreement, we decided to do a two-year calendar. We are being somewhat zealous in proposing a 212, 213 to you, because we normally don't propose two I'm going to leave that as something for you all to think about, if you only wanted to approve the 11-12 now, and then next April, I bring back a 12-13. The reason, and next year, when I brought back the 12-13, I'd have to bring the 13-14 also, because the PNEA agreement, which talks about the two-year calendar, officially the PNEA agreement does not start until July 1st of this year. Is that, questions here?
Well, I think one thing we need to consider, with Project Parkway coming along, do we want to set in stone the 12-13, is that what it is?
Yeah, you're right.
It seems like it's so far ahead, but it's not. Or do we want to leave ourselves a little flexibility, not knowing what the outcomes are going to be?
Since, one of the items for discussion is length of school year. I think that makes Ms. Bozeman, would you be offended at the notion of not considering the out year at this point?
[inaudible]
Correct. Thank you.
I think that's a better way to go right now.
You didn't ask me, but I wouldn't be either. And we already have a draft.
I assume that from your
Yeah. No, we already have a draft.
There you go.
But, but, you know, you bring up a good point about Project Parkway, and like I said, we did this because we know this is coming next year, that we will be presenting two years of calendar for you. But we didn't have to this spring, because the PNEA agreement's not in effect yet. So I just wanted to mention that, I mean, we can stop now and only look at 11-12, and you've given me some suggestions for that, and I can make those and send them back to you, and then, if you want to vote on June 16th, only on the 11-12.
Mary, January 29th.
Yeah, that would have to be taken off in red, too. Yes, yes, yes. But I'm hearing a little bit of maybe let's hold on 12-13 and only bring back 11-12, June 16th with the corrections that have been.
Straw poll around the table, I think. That appears to be a consensus here as well.
Well, at least we have a draft started for April of next year, then.
All right.
I appreciate those suggestions. Any other suggestions for 11-12, then, if we're just concentrating on that?
Am I, straw poll again. Does the board feel like a half a day at the end of the year is a good thing or not a good thing?
I guess
K through eight, pre-K through eight.
I mean, is there any impact on, in the initial parameters you set out for us, where the contact days vice contract days? Am I
I heard contact and contract. Contact days, as far as students, that's the contact days. You know, we would be going, if we use three snow days, we would be going May 24th. We could definitely, kids could go the full day, except for final exams, because the teachers have the Records Day the next day on May 25th. So that could be a very, that could be a change, just, you know, it would be listed there just as the 21st, 22nd, you know, 23rd is May 24th, it would just, it would be full day.
But is there any impact on our contact day math?
I think if
A half-day counts as
People, a half a day
A half-day counts, a half-day counts as
Okay.
For minutes. Now, here's where we do sometimes get in difficulty, though, Bruce, is if we've had a school have to close due to power outage or things like that, there's a, you know, if that happens once, we still have enough minutes in particular.
Okay.
Schools, then we get, then we have to watch out for our contact days and minutes.
Okay. I think, I think the minutes is what I was recalling
The minutes, right.
From previous years where we had, and this would give us a larger cushion on minutes. Is that right?
That's correct, that's correct.
A full-day approach.
That's correct.
I think it's silly to run the buses, you know.
Well, we would be running the buses no matter what, it's just that
It's silly to run the buses for half a day.
Right.
Well, and I think we've heard that
The kindergarten buses would be the ones that you're saving on.
Right. I know I've heard that from parents, you know, get their kids up early, dressed, out the door, on the bus.
Right. But, but again, I want to just to make sure, and I'm sure the board does know this, but if we use four, five, six, seven snow days, then you're going to have to face having kids go a half-day, because teachers in the PNEA contract
Right, that's fine. That would be an unusual circumstance.
Exactly.
We'd have to make an adjustment. But I think if we start out planning for a half a day, I just think it's giving away, you know, some, some good hours with our teachers.
And since we're just doing a one-year calendar, we'll try it, and if it doesn't go well, the following year we'll
Right. And obviously, there's some, several factors in the 11-12 calendar that, you know, we don't know how many snow day is yet and things like that. That's why we always wait until April to make the final decision for the, for the last day at school.
And maybe for 12-13, that'll save us a day in August somehow, for Mr. Jacob.
Well, and I, I know a couple, I know a couple suggestions already on 12-13 that I need to do before I bring it back a year from now, too. So I'll be happy to do that.
Be in Cabo, so.
Good for you. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
14.0, policy review. 14.01, AD dot BP, mission, belief statement. 14.02, ADA dot BP, goals and objectives. And am I calling on Jennifer Cecil for? Or should I say the administrator formally? No.
Couple more days. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my first policy review in
Is it still evening?
I don't know, it's morning, good morning.
We got another hour yet.
Okay. I've never done a policy review. Do you have any consent of policy review? So I am bringing forward tonight for review our policies on mission and goals, which makes sense with what we talked about tonight. So as you can see just there in AD BP, I just, I really changed the language to fit Project Parkway. So you see our draft, mission, vision, learning principles. And then on the second policy for me, goals and objectives, you can see I changed the verbiage again to match the Project Parkway work. So any questions?
Mission, belief. So this AD dot BP will not drill down as far as commitments, is that correct?
No.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding AD dot BP?
Are we going to change the name of it? Take the belief statement out and put the vision? I see you have
Yeah, I Xed it out there.
But on the
And the recommendation would be that, when it was approved, that we would take out the belief statement verbiage. I wanted to mention, sorry, to scare you one last time. We, you can decide as a board to add commitments later on. We never have in policy, but we have had beliefs in policy. So I think for now, having mission, vision, learning principles was thinking. And then, once the commitments are agreed upon, I think the question is, do they go in policy? And I think it would be this policy, so we would have to bring it back. But they're just not ready yet to do that.
Oh, understand. Again, I'm not trying to force the, force the hand on the development of those. Any other questions? And regarding the ADA dot BP, goals and objectives? We gave you a toughie your last round here.
You wait till 11 o'clock at night.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And being no other questions, those will be on the consent agenda for June 16th. Thank you. And 14.03, GA dot BP, adoption leave. 14.04, GCQ dot F dot BP, termination of teacher employment. 14.05, GCU dot B P and G, professional organizations. 14.06, GCMD dot B P and G, extra-duty certified staff. And before I make Mary walk up again, do we have any questions on those policies? So as we'll move to the consent agenda for June 16th. 15.0, call for special meeting, none. 16.0, call for closed meeting, June 5 and June 16, 2010. Can I ask for a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for a closed meeting on Saturday, June 5, 2010, immediately following the special meeting at the Administration Building for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving the district and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610 point 021 point 1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personally disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610 point 021 3. Three, competitive bidding specifications until officially approved or published, 610 point 021 dot 11. Four, fileable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employee or applicants for employment, 610 point 021 point 13. On Wednesday, June 16, 2010, at 6:30 PM, and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610 point 021 point 3. Two, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610 point 021 point 13. Roll call, Mrs. Calanda.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries 6-0.
19.0...
Second.
We're all asleep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. McCarter, no longer being on the board, motion carries 6-0. This time, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much for your attendance, those that made it to the end.